Ready?
Hello and welcome to the city council's business meeting today. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. City secretary manages the folks who come to start our meeting with invocation and today a VIP to sing our national anthem. So if you all would stand with me and we'll welcome Taylor to the podium to do that.
(Music) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[114.92][114.92](Applause)
That does make us proud to be Americans. Taylor, excellent job. Thank you for blessing us with your talent that's given from God but with the hard work that you put into developing it too. And Taylor's mom's with her too. We just want to thank y'all for being here today. Howard, well done. That was fantastic. Yeah. Then we have Dr. Howie Batson here to say our invocation from First Baptist Church. Howie?
Let's pray together. Oh, God, it's been a hard year to be a leader. And those elected before us and those who are employees have led us well. They have been a certain voice during uncertain days. Father has been good to say to folks from other cities, we're from Amarillo. It meant something this year because we were led well. Father, we'll never know how many countless extra meetings and hours have gone into getting us through this pandemic. We look forward now, God. We look for blessing. We look for growth. We look to move forward during this time of celebration as we emerge from some difficult days. We pray for Mayor Nelson today. Bless her again. Use her again. We pray for Colton Will Thankful for his addition to this group. Give him wisdom. May he add to the common wisdom as they govern together. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Howie. Thank you so much. You may be seated. Howie, I do want to thank you for those words and I want to say that we have had tremendous favor from the Lord in our city over this last year and whether it's been medical, health, economic, education, we just have had tremendous blessing and protection from Him. But very much so appreciate your words. We'll move now to the public address portion of our meeting and I will pass that to Jenny Ramirez.
Okay, the first speaker is Catherine Travis. Travis, sorry. She wants to speak about painting the water tower.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the San Jacinto Neighborhood Association, I would like to take this opportunity to read directly from the San Jacinto Neighborhood Plan. History and culture goal number one, we will honor the legacy of historic San Jacinto and its unique cultural heritage that makes the neighborhood one of a kind. Consider the possibility of painting the water tower at Southwest Sixth Avenue and South Independence with a neighborhood/Route 66 theme. Add a photo-worthy gateway feature for Route 66. First, having a photo-worthy gateway feature for travelers to share on social media will draw even more travelers to leave I-40 and drive to our neighborhood. For example, the Cadillac Ranch gets nearly a half a million visitors yearly. We want those half a million folks to come on down to Sixth Street and post pics with the Amarillo 66 Shield on our water tower and spend money in our neighborhood stimulating the economy for more Amarillo. Which brings me to another goal, economic development goal number one. We will build upon the successes of the Sixth Street businesses and encourage new entrepreneurs to establish their businesses within San Jacinto. With additional visitors coming to our neighborhood, our businesses can reap the benefits of more sales. This will generate more commercial funds for employment growth and will inspire new or existing businesses to move into our neighborhood. I want to include another point. Center City has included Sixth Street as a part of the Amarillo Cultural District. Again, another partnership with the City of Amarillo to promote downtown while also understanding that Sixth Street or Route 66 is an asset of Amarillo to worldwide travelers. This brings me to our final goal. History and culture goal number two, we will highlight the artistic and creative spirit of the neighborhood by promoting the visual and performing arts. We will be hosting our first annual San Jacinto Art on Route 66 show on September 30th, which simply adds to making us worthy of being a part of the Amarillo Cultural District. In conclusion, someone once wise told me, part of reviving an historic neighborhood is changing the perception of the neighborhood. We know that while painting the Amarillo 66 Shield on a water tower doesn't directly help the residents of San Jacinto, we do believe that it is a big step in changing their perception of the neighborhood. As you all know, the revitalization of downtown Amarillo has been going on for 30 years. We know that the leadership of the City of Amarillo has been a major agent in this process. We know that y'all know that Route 66 is one of our country's premier assets and that cool, funky, eclectic part of it runs right down the middle of San Jacinto and it directly links us to downtown. We're happy that the leadership of Amarillo now recognizes the uniqueness of San Jacinto neighborhood by allowing the Amarillo 66 Shield to be painted on our water tower. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dora Maroney.
Continue. Who's on deck? Thank you.
They have a handout. I don't know if y'all are allowed to have anything.
If you don't mind giving it to the officer, he would be more than willing to bring it up to us. Thank you.
About a decade ago, Amarillo Historic Sixth on Route 66 Association first approached the city about painting Route 66 on our water tower at Sixth and Independence Street. At that time, the water tower had just been repainted and they said the next time it came up for painting, if we revisited the city or about it, that we might could get it painted the next time. So when the city started the neighborhood meetings and San Jacinto Neighborhood had our first meeting, we spoke to Cassie about it and it got included in our neighborhood plan. And at that time, we thought it would qualify for bond fund money, but it didn't. And later Emily said that it might be able to be included in the community investment program. So we're hoping that's still available, the $8,000 through that. And on your paper, you'll see that the handout gives you five reasons why we believe that Route 66 or Amarillo 66 painted on the water tower would be a good idea. And as Catherine mentioned, the tourism dollars, also the nor- nor- I can't say the word, variety that the Route 66 brings to Texas and across the United States. The Amarillo 66 would be even better than just a generic Route 66 because people would know they were in Amarillo. And later, when they reviewed their photos, they would realize where they were and other people would know where they were. The recognition, there's a lot of websites out there that have nothing to do with but water towers, painted water towers in the United States and water tanks. And they have a lot of followers. A lot of people just love painted water towers and Amarillo could join and have thousands of followers through that. And the neighborhood pride, it would help the San Jacinto Neighborhood just to have something that they knew the city supported and other people coming through could see that the city supported the neighborhood as well as everything else in the city. And the support of, you have three nonprofit associations that support the painting of the Amarillo 66, the Historic Sixth Street on Route 66 Association, the Old Route 66 Association of Texas, and the San Jacinto Neighborhood Association. And we've had donations received from five states who are doing a fundraiser for $18,000 because that's what we have been told it might cost to get the emblem painted. And so we had donations from five states other than Texas, from two countries, Canada and Japan. And of course, the mayor donated to us and we thank y'all for your consideration and we hope we can work with you guys on getting this painted. Thanks.
The next up is Teresa Kennedy. Good afternoon, Mayor Nelson and city council members. El Barrio Neighborhood was founded in 1889 in Potter County and is 132 years old this year. As we grow older, our bodies need more care and support. So does our barrio. For 4,615 residents living in approximately 950 acres from Southeast Third to Southeast 29th and from Garfield to Ross, Osage Street, 47% of our residents own their own homes and approximately 14,000 vehicles a day travel on 10th Avenue alone. El Barrio is a historical neighborhood which centers around family, pride, culture, and just a variety of projects through art, music, stories, celebrations, and family gatherings. The Barrio Neighborhood Planning Committee or the BMPC Board, which I have privilege to serve on as president, and our community volunteers are working together with our city planners to revitalize 10th Avenue from Garfield to Ross with the Southeast 10th Avenue Street project. This project will cost $3.1 million. So it's important that we apply for grants such as the TechStot Transportation Alternative Grant. This important project will do for 10th Avenue the following. Be a beautiful and functional open space for families and visitors to connect, gather, and walk or ride from Garfield to Ross Street on ADA accessible sidewalks and crosswalks. Have open spaces to sit, eat, and visit with friends and family. Provide safe and secure space for families and visitors to cross and walk, including people who need extra help, especially with their wheelchairs or walkers. Give fun opportunities to enjoy a bite to eat in our wonderful sunshine. Have a revitalized economic impact by bringing more residents, visitors, and businesses into El Barrio. And as you, we want to welcome you to our neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Stanley, for coming to meet with me last week. And also thank you for listening and considering this important grant that we're looking at with TechStot and that Andrew Freeman will share with you later. Thank you.
That's it. Concludes our public address today and we thank you all for your time and your comments. I'm going to ask for your patience and flexibility today as we do a little bit of jumping around on our agenda. We have some guests in the room today that are related to item 3B on our agenda and so I would like to move forward to that portion of our agenda where we canvass the mayoral election and then do the swearing in. Yes, 3A is the canvas and 3B is the swearing in, but the guests are related to 3B. So we've got to do 3A first. So see, it is so easy to be the mayor with this group of people. I promise, they have always got the check and double check on and I appreciate it. Specifically, Council Mayor Pro Tem Powell, absolutely, but I always appreciate the check and double check. Isn't that right, Mayor Harpold? You need it, yes. You need it. Okay. So that being said, we are looking at agenda item 3A. Mr. City Manager?
Right. Mayor, we have canvassing the election. We have our interim city secretary, Leann Goleman, to canvass the election. Leann? It's really just reading the resolution.
Yes, right. Okay. A resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results for the regular election for the office of mayor held in the City of Amarillo on the first day of May 2021 for city offices.
Thank you, Leann. And if you weren't part of local news over the last two weeks, there was a recount related to the, a recount request related to the results for the mayor's election and that was held a week ago, last Wednesday. The results did not change and so that's why the mayor was not sworn in at the same time as the city council because that recount was not completed at the time we swore in those other council members. So we'll take care of that. Then we need a motion regarding the resolution referenced in item 3A.
And just to, prior to motion, just to be clear on the counts, the counts that resulted from the recount process were Michael Hunt, 3,073 votes, Claudette Smith, 5,877 votes, Carl Karas, 372 votes, and Ginger Nelson, 10,962 votes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion with regard to this resolution?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution to canvass the returns and declaring the results of the regular election for the office of mayor held in the City of Amarillo on the first day of May 2021 for the city offices.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Council Member Sauer to approve the resolution that will canvass the returns on the mayor's race from the first day of May, from the election results of May 1st, 2021.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. That passes with a 5-0 vote.
And we'll move us on to item 3B. I'd like to welcome Judge Laura Hamilton, who is our municipal court judge, to do the swearing in. And I would also like to invite my family to step up from the audience to join us here.
You'll raise your right hand. I, Mr. Nelson, Ginger Nelson, do solemnly swear, faithfully solemnly swear, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office, of mayor of the City of Amarillo, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state. So help me God. I just want to introduce all of these special people that are up here. We went to lunch together before coming over here to do the ceremony. It was to celebrate not just today, but all of the work that goes into today. And I will just say, you can't do it without your family. And so while I come and serve, the call to serve is on our entire family. And I just want to honor each one of you. These are my in-laws, Dennis and Judy Nelson. They are from Spearman. I love them dearly. These are my parents, Bob and Jackie Pearson, who are also here today from Spearman. These are our children, Pierce, Madeline, and Jace. And I want to thank each of you for the sacrifice that you make to help us as a family serve the city. And this is, my favorite first gentleman, Kevin Nelson. We celebrated on Sunday our 29th anniversary. So we don't yet have Carol and Howard caught and we got a little ways to go to him. They're a great example for us for sacrificing and honoring marriage together. So I also just want to say that it's really my dad's fault that he got us all into this because he used to serve as the mayor of Spearman and served more than one term as a city council member there. And Paul, it may make you nervous to know, he was a council member, he was mayor, then took like a 20-year break and came back on the council. So (Laughter) yeah, and I see our former first lady, Jenny Harpold. I also want to thank some special guests that are here in the audience and that will be Mayor Jenny. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Mayor. You're always available anytime I have questions and sometimes you're there just to pick me up and dust me off and I really, really appreciate that. Also here are Bill and Deb Harris, who I love dearly and have been with us from the start, from our very first campaign. And they do quite a bit of dusting off and encouraging too, so thank them all. My dear friend, Mariel Hunt, is here with her grandson, Jace, and I am grateful for them. And I just want to give a special nod to Sherri Ferguson and Teresa Kennedy, who have also been dedicated friends over the last four years and through three different campaigns. So thank y'all all for being here today. I appreciate you and love each of you. So thank y'all all so much.
Howard, do you want to be in the background? Ready, one, two, three. Yeah.
Howard's guilty of a little bomb.
Yeah. Right. He should have jumped on his fingers.
Is he, is he a practical joke?
Yeah.
Seems like he'd be kind of dry on the back.
Yeah, he is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, y'all will be so glad we did that when we get down to the non-consent portion.
We'll skip right past the first three items. Thank y'all for indulging us on that. Okay, moving on to section one of the agenda, which is to review agenda items and the attachments. And Council, just right up front, we give you a chance to say, I have questions or I didn't understand or I needed more information on any item, anything in the packet that you needed an explanation on right up front. Okay, not hearing anything. Let's move to 1B for a coronavirus update, Mr. City Manager.
All right, Mayor, thank you. We have Casey Stoughton, Director of Public Health, to provide the update that we've been receiving routinely. We also have Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs, to provide us a high-level update on where we're at on analysis of the American Rescue Plan funds. But understand, please, that there is a lot of work yet to be done there and a lot of analysis. And we're still waiting on the final guidance from federal funding sources with regard to how that can be spent, what the reporting requirements are on that. So Casey, please take it away.
Yes, sir. So as of today, there are a total of 34,435 cases of COVID-19 in Potter and Randall Counties, 17,535 cases in Potter County, and 16,900 cases in Randall County. We have a total of 33,226 recoveries and we have remained steady at 757 deaths. So it's been really good news that we haven't had additional deaths in several days. We, so that leaves us with 452 active cases. The seven-day rolling positivity rate is currently at 3%. The positivity rate at the drive-through testing site, which is a subset of the total, is at 29%. And the five-day new case average is at 21 new cases per day. Yesterday, our GA 34 hospitalization percentage was at 2.32%, meaning that just over 2% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. The public health drive-through testing site does remain operational and patients can call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. The vaccine clinic is also operational at Amarillo Civic Center's entrance two and today will be open until 7:00 PM. We will be closed on Monday, Memorial Day, so this coming Monday, the vaccination clinic and the COVID testing site will resume operations on Tuesday, June 1st. On that Tuesday, the vaccination clinic will look a little different. We'll still be at the Civic Center but moving from the North Exhibit Hall to the Regency Room. And entrance four will be the best entrance starting Tuesday. Well, we have been able to shrink our footprint as our crowds have become smaller, allowing the Civic Center to utilize the space for more rentals. And we sure appreciate the Civic Center for their flexibility and hospitality. To date, Amarillo Public Health has given 74,402 first doses of the Moderna vaccine and 57,566 second doses for a total of 131,968 Moderna doses of Moderna and 352 first doses of the Pfizer vaccine to adolescents 12 to age 12 to 17. Thursday, our team will be at the Warford Community Center from 10 to 5 for a mobile COVID vaccination clinic. And then as a community, we're right around 33% for eligible population being fully vaccinated. And again, that's everyone ages 12 and older. So we still have a ways to go and that's why I encourage you, if you haven't been vaccinated, now's a great time to do so. Encourage a friend, bring a friend, bring a family member, you know, just whatever we can do to increase that vaccination coverage rate. But right now, our community, both Potter and Randall County together, is right around 33%. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
So Casey, I think they announced like within the past couple of days that they're going to give the EUA for Moderna for 12 to 17-year-olds. Do you think that'll change what's given here in Amarillo or do you think it will stay Johnson &amp; Johnson?
You know, I hope so. You know, right now Pfizer is the vaccine that's available to 12 to 17 or 12 to 15. And so I hope that as there's more options available, that, you know, anytime there's more options, you know, then hopefully more people will be able to be vaccinated. We have a lot of Moderna vaccine available at the Civic Center clinic. Our Pfizer supply has certainly increased and so supply is not, should not be a barrier. So please come see us.
Any other questions for Casey?
Yes, ma'am. Casey, how long will our vaccination clinic continue to be open at the Civic Center?
That's a great question. And I don't really have a great answer for you, but really until our demand allows us to move back to the public health department. Jared may have additional information on that, but right now, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
We're working that as a balance, one, between demand. Like Casey said, when we do go to public health, we will be doing that by appointment.
Yes, sir.
So we want to keep doing the walk-in model as long as we possibly can. And our neighborhood, our remote clinics on Thursdays will continue to be walk-in clinics so we can do a high volume there. We're balancing that with the availability of space at the Civic Center because as we move into June, we start phasing into normal operations for the Civic Center. So there's going to be a demand for some of that space that we are currently using. We will shift users around to be able to preserve the ability to use the Civic Center as long as possible. But there will come a point where demand drops for vaccinations and demand for the Civic Center goes up. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to make those decisions with an interest towards public health, but there is also a consideration for the operational effectiveness of the Civic Center.
And we'll always have that information available at AmarilloAlerts.com so people can find us and know where we are. But right now, we're at the Civic Center.
And as we have done throughout this entire period, we have erred on the side of taking care of public health rather than the operational considerations of the Civic Center. So we're not, we will not make any decisions that are not in the best interest of our community, their health, and taking care of this pandemic.
Casey, what kind of volume are you seeing at the Thursday remote clinics?
It kind of varies. So the first time we were at the So the first time we were at the Warford Clinic, we had over 200, and right now, we're averaging around 40 to 50 patients at each of the clinics. So I think that's great. It's, you know.
It's lower than what we get at the Civic Center. However, it is targeting, it is addressing a target audience that is some of the most at-risk populations that we have. So there's a give and take there.
But we're still open at the Civic Center, so our overall numbers are still pretty good, but we're certainly able to, the vaccine is more convenient, and certainly people in different communities are accessing us, and so that's really great.
Casey, do you track, say, Walgreens private care facilities? Are those all in those numbers that you just gave us?
So no, these are only.
These are just the vaccine clinic?
Yes, sir. I can, I can, so the overall 33% is the total vaccine given in our community. So that, I pulled that from the state's website, so that does include private doctors, our pharmacies, the hospitals, so all of our providers. So that is an inclusive number there.
So the 33% is, and then the other numbers were the vaccine clinic?
Right, that's strictly just public health's information.
Okay. Casey, take a second just to lay the foundation for how that data is collected and why we only have visibility through the state's website on all of the vaccines given in the city.
Sure. So we, as a provider, as a clinic, have to report all of our, all the vaccines given into the state's system called MTRAC. And all of the providers across the state do the same. So Walgreens and Dr., you know, Dr. Keister and Dr., you know, all the different doctors, when they administer a vaccine, they enter that into MTRAC. But we don't have access to their information, just like they don't have access to our information. So this 33% that was pulled off the state's website, that's from their dashboard. So they have a, they tabulate the information, analyze it, and have a forward-facing piece of information. But we have entered all of our information into that state's system, MTRAC.
Got it.
Thank you.
And our numbers reflect our health district, not just the city limits. So that's another thing that's been a differential through all of this that sometimes people miss, is that the numbers that we report, we're reporting on behalf of Potter, Randall County, which is our health district.
Right.
Not just the city limits.
Right, so the Public Health Department has jurisdiction in both Potter and Randall Counties and all of the communities they're in. And.
What's the total population in those two, or in our health district? Do you know?
It's about 261.
Okay.
And the other component, so there's kind of all these complicating factors, but another component of that is being a hub clinic, that designation, we're required to vaccinate people regardless of where they live. So we, in these numbers, we are also vaccinating people who may live in Spearman or who may live, you know, anywhere in the Texas Panhandle or outside of Texas even. And that is by requirement of the State Health Department.
I know of at least four Spearmanites that you vaccinated.
Excellent.
First-hand knowledge on that.
Wonderful.
Casey, did, so I think I read this morning where the results from the Moderna studies were that 12 to 17, it was 100% effective after two weeks of this, after two weeks after the second shot, with no measurable side effects. Is that?
Yes, those results are amazing. I think kids are amazing. So, you know, that, this vaccine is truly, I think, one of the, you know, vaccines in general are just a marvel of public health and of science. This vaccine is truly amazing. It's one of the cleanest vaccines we've ever had. It's, you know, it's just targeting that very specific virus, and so it's just really an amazing vaccine, and so it is very, very safe and very effective for both children and adults.
And free.
And free. That's one of the best parts, too. Absolutely, it's free at the city clinic.
Any other questions? Jared, anything to add?
No, ma'am.
I know my son is looking forward to his 12th birthday. It's coming up.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah, he'll get it for his birthday.
Happy birthday, son. Let's go get a shot.
Come with mom.
Yes, I'm in charge of public health. It's a priority.
That's right.
Well, at least you're walking the talk.
Legos and a vaccine.
Yeah, I love it. Okay, thank you, Casey.
Sure, I appreciate you all.
Jared, do we have something from Laura on that?
Yes, ma'am. Laura?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So I don't have a whole lot to update you all on. I just wanted to maybe go over a quick couple of highlights, if you could go a couple of slides forward. One more, there we go. As a reminder, we did get an updated number based on the 2019 population estimate. So the city of Amarillo, our allocation of the American Rescue Plan funding is $39,676, I'm sorry, $676,317 as of right now. So we're assuming that may be our final number, because on May 19th, we received half of that, which came to a little over $19.8 million. So that is in the bank. We've put it into a money market account and are looking to invest it to make the tiny bit of interest we can make off anything right now. So we've got it safe and secure, at least half of it at this point. What we are doing now is going deeper into all of the eligibility requirements. As you all are aware, on May 17th, we had a community solutions meeting, and we invited the community out to speak with us about what they think the priorities for the dollars should be. And so we made notes of all of that. We are looking deep into the eligibility requirements to see how those pieces, from what we heard, might fit into the funding. If you can go one more slide for me, please. As a reminder, these are the eligible areas for use. So to support the public health expenditures related to the pandemic, address negative economic impacts, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for identified essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, drainage, or broadband infrastructure. So what we are doing is we are trying to find ways to identify ways to spend money according to each one of these eligible criteria that we can bring forward to council. We have put feelers out across the state to other communities to see what others are doing. We are hearing more and more, a lot of dollars are being put into infrastructure projects. That is a pretty consistent thing we're hearing across communities, whether that's water, sewer, drainage, or broadband. So certainly hearing that. If you'll go one more slide, I wanted just to mention as well, you know, just a couple of things to consider through the act, that we need to be aware of other things that were provided through this bill to address other areas than to the municipal government. Can you go, go one more? There we go. Great. So just wanted to briefly mention some other areas that are provided by the act. So there's specific funding in these areas, whether there's capital project funds, transit, airport, EPA, there's business and nonprofit, modifications to the PPP program, operator venue grants, restaurant revitalization, and so on and so forth. There's housing programs, food security programs. So what we're trying to navigate through all of this is, we have certainly been told not to duplicate efforts that have already been allocated in the act. And so we're trying to navigate what we're hearing from the community and what is, fits into the eligible criteria without trying to find things that are duplicating other areas inside the act. So we appreciate y'all's patience as we continue to work through this. We're hoping to have some more information for you all soon. We're watching the Treasury's website for any more guidance, and as I mentioned, we're putting feelers out to see what some other communities are doing as well, to see if anybody's found some amazing projects that we hadn't even thought of. So we'll continue to bring updates, and I can answer any questions that you guys have.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Anything else, City Manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Let's move on then to item 1C, which is a presentation on a City Hall renovation update.
All right, Mayor, we've got Director of Facilities Jerry Danforth here to present the item. We, as we have gone through the last more than two years, almost three years really, as we've worked through the bond program that was presented to voters last November, because we knew that City Hall was a component of that, not necessarily on the bond question itself, but as a project that would have taken place if that had passed, we have deferred a lot of maintenance here at City Hall for the primary reason of why would we do maintenance on a facility that may no longer exist, because it'd be wasting funds. So we've been band-aiding some things along. We're to the point where we need to get a little bit of guidance from council on what direction do you want to go. So the questions we have will revolve around things that we can do to keep this facility going. And I don't want to present things in a way that steers people towards one opinion or another. It is an old facility, 55, a little over years old. So there are a number of things that we need to do to keep this facility moving for the next three, four, five years. We also want to present to you what it would cost to fully renovate this facility, to bring it consistent with current development guidelines, and to have it not be a non-conforming use. Currently, this building is a non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming use is the way we phrase it in development circles. And then the third aspect we want to present to you is the facility that we purchased last year as a future home of City Hall, which is the Amarillo Hardware Building. So we're going to present to you options on the renovation, or at least on the keeping this facility moving in the short term, costs of between $4 and $5 million. And then renovation costs for either this building or Amarillo Hardware, up to as much as right around $30 million. So, but that's, those are all-in costs, not just renovation costs, but also other costs that we would have to do to be able to use that building, like streetscape and drive-through for patrons and guests, for utility bills and things like that. So Jerry, walk us through it. That was a long introduction, but it does say that this is a very complicated topic that we've been discussing for a number of years. Jerry?
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to give you this information, and thank you to Mr. Stanley as well for walking the facilities with me yesterday to get a little better understanding of what we're presenting today. There's a lot of information here, so as we go forward, bear with me, and if there's a particular question that you've got as we're progressing, please stop me, so I can give you a little bit more detailed information. The presentation, basically, as Mr. Miller represented, we are going to look at what City Hall is currently, what the catastrophic needs are that we're going to need addressed within the next year to two years, and then absolutely what we look at as far as space needs in the future, in either this structure or another structure. So those options are all on the table. First, we'll start out with, and if you'll advance, the renovation costs of the existing City Hall. We look at the cost of remodeling spaces actually within here, and so I broke it down in several sections, some of it being critical items and some of it being items that we look at as we look at City Hall, what its uses are going to be, what its needs are going to be. A good example is, is a lot of the departments have had to grow because our population has grown, our city is growing, and so it's not, we can't stay stagnant as far as staff size or services size, because we have more population to service. So as we look at the increase, we're looking at remodeling spaces at $220 a square foot for 40,000 square foot of this structure. You realize that that doesn't represent the entire structure. That represents 40,000 square feet. Existing City Hall's right at 80,000 square feet. So that number is represented there. The remodel of the restrooms for ADA compliance within City Hall, currently, we only have one restroom in City Hall that is ADA compliant, and that's on the second floor of City Hall. Remodeling of the restrooms, one thing that I want to point out is, we have cast iron pipe that was installed back in the original construction. Cast iron pipe doesn't last forever. It is failing, and it's inside of walls. So a lot of times when we get the calls that we smell sewer smell here in City Hall, it's generally one of those pipes that's failed. We're reaching the point where that is going to have to be addressed. When we address the restrooms, we have to address the piping at the same time, so that's why you see those numbers represented. Remodel of the elevators. The elevators are original to the structure as well. They're an old DC system that replacement components are no longer available for. We have to have them special-made to repair. The new, modern style is, of course, solid-state controls and AC voltage. So there's a big-ticket item there to make those upgraded and upgrade the cabs and the lighting and everything. Those numbers are representative of what we are looking at currently at the police department, so you can see those numbers, those baselines represented there. The catastrophic stuff that I mentioned earlier, this is one of those line items, the chillers, the boiler systems, cooling towers, storage tanks for the sump system, and HVAC improvements and replacements. You can see that's a big-ticket item, but that is something that would have to be addressed. If you don't do anything within the next two years, you will spend that money here in this building. There's no getting around it. Windows, lighting, security, generator improvements and replacement. The windows currently at City Hall are single-pane windows. The energy efficiency of a single-pane window is not very good. Replacement of those is not cheap. The generator that currently runs City Hall is only capable of running one floor of City Hall. So in other words, if we lose, have a catastrophic failure of the power grid here within Amarillo, we basically shut down City Hall operations. So upgrading that is a necessary improvement that we're looking at. Flood control of the structure, and you'll see some of that as we go through the slides here in a minute, that backs up the documentation that we have as far as pricing here. IT costs are represented in there. Those of you that work on the third floor and realize that your computer glitches from time to time, it's because your uncabling that was installed back in the 60s. It's failing, it needs to be replaced and upgraded. Relocation of IT and moving staff out of City Hall, if we do a total remodel of City Hall, there's cost. I can't remodel a structure fully occupied. So components of City Hall would have to be relocated to another building. IT would have to be relocated to that other building. Infrastructure would have to be to that other building while this building was being remodeled. So those costs are represented here as well. The last is architectural and engineering costs, and that would come with any version that we're going to do here. So that gives you a good baseline for what you're looking at there. Next slide, please. There was, there's the dedication plaque for City Hall. We built it in '66. The forefathers did a fantastic job, I will say that. They did a great job of building a structure, but the population of Amarillo was not what it is right now. And so consequently, it's kind of like when you first start out and you're a married couple, you can deal with a two-seater car. When the family starts, you jumped up to a station wagon. So that's where we are as a city right now. We're outgrowing the existing facility. Next slide, please. Everybody thinks concrete lasts forever. As Mr. Stanley can attest to, it does not, especially in a situation like what we have here at City Hall, where we have constant water, and the front steps at City Hall's an example. When you see that concrete, when you walk out, you'll see that the concrete under the tile is actually crumbling and failing. Next slide. This is, I hate to say this, but this is where most of you come into the building at. Next slide. That's where we have the concrete falling there as well. That bridge that covers across there, next slide. The concrete is, actually, that's why you see the wood members, is basically for safety, not for support. The concrete is actually breaking and falling apart there. Next slide. Next slide. One thing I want to draw your attention to, and it's hard to see in this slide, but this was poured-in-place concrete, so we have expansion joints in between every concrete slab that was poured. That's where we're getting a lot of water penetration, actually into the basement of City Hall. When we have a heavy, heavy sustained rains here that saturates basically the park area on the north side of City Hall, that water settles in the soils, and the only place it can go, it gets captured there. It takes the path of least resistance, and it actually drains into your IT department down in City Hall. Next slide.
I'll add, too, that when the governor came to visit last summer, and we did a press conference here at City Hall, because of the wheelchair access, and we have so few, this building was not designed for ADA or anyone in a wheelchair. This is the door our governor used to come in and out of. Yeah.
Here's a little better slide of that expansion joint. If you look at the fencing and then just look straight down, you can see where those walls are actually separating and coming apart. Next slide. This is looking inside that structural beam that's failing, and we have this happening in multiple places within the facility. You see where the rebar is actually corroded and starting to come apart and rust in there. The only way that we can truly test that throughout the structure is actually go in and core-drill that, several spots within the building. It's an expensive proposition to do that. It's an expensive proposition to do that. We know that it exists in multiple areas, so we didn't go to the expense of core-drilling because we are already aware of it. Next slide. Here's a little better, closer view of it. You can see that the rebar at that point right there has lost about twenty-five percent of its strength. Next one. And the next one. And the next one. This one here is a stinky subject. I don't know how to say this, but all of the waste from the restrooms actually goes into two steel storage tanks down in the basement of City Hall. Those steel storage tanks, we put it what's called a mega, where we can measure the resistance of the steel. Oilfield industry uses that quite often to inspect their pipelines. We mega'd these, and we're dealing with anywhere from an eighth inch to a sixteenth of an inch of steel left inside those. Once those fail, raw sewage actually penetrates the ground, and we will have further damage down there. So, those are represented in the replacement costs. Next slide. You remember when we approached you last year about the heater systems? These are the boilers in the basement. There should be four of them. Two of them were catastrophic failures. The one that you see with the smoke on the side of it is actually running at about forty percent efficiency, so that will have to be addressed.
Mayor, I think three of them were catastrophic failures.
That's correct.
The one with the burn marks is the last one that was made for this building. The one on the right is actually one, and correct me if I'm wrong, we took this from the boilers that we have over at the Civic Center to try and keep this building running, and if we hadn't done that, and we did it only a matter of weeks or months right before the freeze--
It was three days before the big freeze.
Three days before the big freeze. And Jerry was like, hey, I need authorization to do this, and I said, yeah, approved. So, we took one of the sixteen that we have over at the Civic Center, but of those sixteen, only eight are of the type of boiler that we could move one over here. So, we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul. We're robbing from one fifty-five-year-old building to keep another one going. So, and that sounds like I'm steering in a direction. I really don't mean it that way, but we're running out of options here before we're going to have to modernize what we do with boiler systems in this building, because everything is made for these old ones, and we can't use new boilers in this-- with this infrastructure.
That's correct. New ventilation systems would have to be installed. We have to build the current codes, and so when we upgrade, we have to build back to the current code. So, there would be quite a substantial amount of modifications of the existing duct systems just for the new boiler systems to go in. One thing that while we're talking about boilers and coolers for this building, we have what's called a single-loop system. So, we have one big chiller, and then we have a bank of boilers. All of the heating and cooling comes through a single pipe that hits these fan quills on the-- around the perimeter of the building. That's galvanized piping. You're looking at galvanized piping that's fifty-five years old. Mr. Smith can tell you on a residence, if you got galvanized piping, generally somebody wants to take a different look at it before they buy it. That's the situation you're in. We do have failures occurring on that. To change that out is a big number, but it is something that you need to be aware of. Next slide. That's the existing chiller that's here. It's thirty years old. Typical lifespan of a chiller for a facility like this is around twenty to twenty-five years. We're at thirty years here. I will tell you that fifty percent of the time last year in this building, your cooling came actually from the Civic Center because that chiller was non-functional and we were doing repairs on it. It's basically aging out to where it has to be pulled out and either sent back to a manufacturer to be rebuilt, which you're looking at anywhere from two to four months for a rebuild on one of those or buying a new chiller system. Next slide. This is actually in the basement here at City Hall. What you're looking at is the cast iron pump, or cast iron pipes and drains below the floor have started rusting to the point to where it's actually cracking the concrete and heaving it up. Next slide. That's another view of the same thing. This is where you see-- the sinks look great, but when you look at the wall, that's where the corrosion of the cast iron pipe through that access port is actually pushing the wall out. Next slide. This is not City Hall, but I did bring these three photos as points of reference for you to think about. The airports, this is our airport, and when we had the Hundred Year Flood, those of you that were around are aware of what happened at that time. Next slide. And the next slide. When we talk about our ramp, Mayor, as you referenced earlier, we have one three-inch cast iron drain at the bottom of the ramp that deals with rainwater here. When we know that there's a big rain coming in, facilities actually comes over and throws sandbags along the walls to block the doors, and we set a sump pump inside the building with an additional bank of sandbags just to pump the water out that we know is going to run into our building. We've had four events in the last twelve years since I've been here where the bottom floor of City Hall has flooded. Thankfully, our computer systems are on raised decks downstairs, but our electrical grid is not, so we are very cognizant of those issues when they come along. So, when you look at what has to be done here at City Hall, thank God we haven't had the Hundred Year Flood, but if it does happen, I don't know that I can protect the building. Okay? Next slide. Amarillo Hardware Building. When we looked at this, we talked about this last year, but we went ahead and put some numbers together for you, so you could look at those, so you could make an educated decision on which direction you want to instruct the city manager to go, and thus he'll instruct me in that direction as well. When we look at renovations of the Amarillo Hardware Building, we would only renovate eighty thousand square feet of it, or that would be my proposal. Maintain the existing size of what City Hall is. It's adequate at this time. It doesn't need to expand immediately, but we have room for expansion within Amarillo Hardware Building where we don't have that here. So, I took-- we took three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a square foot, and that's where you come up with your number, plus the IT costs of that structure. Streetscape around that to maintain downtown's design standards is one-point-two million. Demolition of the buildings and parking lot improvements is one-point-three, and the A&E cost is right at two million dollars. Next slide, please. And the next slide. One thing we've always been cognizant of, you know, we've always had the downtown plan. What are we going to do? As we build and we look at anything we do to our structures that we own, we always look at how that plan could potentially affect us in the future, and we build cognizant of that. Granted, the Civic Center wasn't passed at the last vote, but it's something we're still cognizant of. So, when we look at that, we took into account that design and how that would affect a future City Hall and this existing City Hall and the limitations it would create for an expanded Civic Center. Next slide.
Jerry, can you go back to that previous slide?
Sure.
So, when we say demolition of buildings and parking lot improvements, one-point-three million, just so to make sure everyone's clear, these two parking lots that we have, one to the north of Amarillo Hardware and one to the west of Amarillo Hardware, those both have buildings on them. This would demolish those two half-blocks and would build parking in those areas. It would not demolish GDI. GDI would continue to be used, and if that building was ever demolished, it would be because we've decided at some point in the future, through either public-private partnership or some future decision on the community's part, to build an arena on that spot. But it will-- this solution will preserve the ability to build an arena in the future. If we spend the money we would need to spend to renovate and make this facility a long-term facility, that would not be an option going forward, at least not in that location.
Correct.
Go ahead, Jerry.
This was a view or a concept that we came up with at your facilities department of what a future City Hall could look like. One of the things that we were most proud of is that we maintained a historical structure here in downtown, that there was a lot of history tied to a lot of the people that grew up in this town. We wanted to maintain that look and enhance it. So, you're looking at the future City Hall potentially having drive-through lanes, three drive-through lanes for service for those that are paying their utility bills or other services where our customers actually have more ease and more access to our building. And then developing the floors as needed and as directed. Next slide, please. That's the interior of the Amarillo Hardware Building. That's the first floor level. Next slide. There's Councilman Sauer's slide. I intend to keep that no matter what.
Actually, Howard, excuse me.
I want to rock.
Next slide, please. This is another view of that. One thing we did was we played around with what would office spaces look like. Those offices are basically fifteen by fifteen offices. They're good-sized offices. You're looking at a large amount of offices that we could accommodate on that first floor. You're also looking at four conference spaces, so there is room. When you look at the columns, it's deceiving until you actually do the construction. If you do your construction right, you can accommodate the space. Next slide, please.
And that's just an exercise in what could we do on the first floor.
Absolutely.
How we design a City Hall is going to be designed on-- it would be focused around the customers. So, typically, your first floor is going to be your front-facing departments, you know, utility billing, HR, park reservations, you know, things that someone's going to come to City Hall and need to see someone. So, it might not look exactly like what we put on there. That's going to be something that we're going to get a lot of input from an architect who is going to design it to be a City Hall, but this is just an exercise done by our in-house architects on what could we do from an office standpoint. But it might shift a little bit, just to make sure that what we're doing on the first floor is designed to focus on the customer's needs.
And it's a point of reference, too. When you think about the Sims Building, we dealt with a lot of columns in the Sims Building as well, but most of those columns aren't readily identifiable due to the way we did the construction. If those of you that have been to the police department, I'm dealing with the same thing from a structural aspect. So, when we look at open floor plans, Mr. Miller's absolutely correct. This is just, if we were to build a cube farm, this is what it would look like, and we would have plenty of room. The typical office space right now is a twelve-by-ten, so these are actually bigger than what you would have in a typical office space. This would be the view, if you were to go to Amarillo Hardware, this would be the view you would have, less the buildings and the power lines from council chambers, looking back to the west. This is a point of reference. There's Hodge Town, and then the City Hall sits right in behind it.
So, Jerry, can we go back just a step? Because you were talking about the structural columns, and so they do work for office spaces. They don't work for like a chamber--
Correct.
--that we have here. So, you were alluding to that there may be an addition up on the roof deck. Is that right? That's what that--
There potentially could be, and when we get into the A&E portion of it, that's where we sit down with our architect and see what's the value. Do we cut out part of that wall on the front side, or do we do a big clear-span area similar to what we have here? Council's very aware that this chamber is too small many times when we have some of our meetings, so when we look at a council chamber, we're looking at something that would be equivalent to what we have here, plus Room 306 and Room 101 here at City Hall. That tends to have been the largest that we've had, so I would imagine we would do a design similar to that. That's a very good question.
So, whenever we've got-- so, from what I've-- from looking at this, there's an additional fifty-nine, sixty thousand square feet that will be potential for future use.
Absolutely.
Until this last statement about putting the potential of having city council chambers out, I would assume that you would have finished out the first two floors and not finished out the third floor, but I guess the finish-out design would be different than--
Correct.
--than just straight across the board.
Yes, it wouldn't be uniform, because you're exactly right. Some of your tenants are going to want different floor plans, depending on what their needs are. So, if we're looking at some other entity that does a lot of business with the city of Amarillo, that rental space would be a major attraction to them, to where they're bringing their clients in from out of town, they're talking to them, they need to be able to talk to the city manager, he's just across the hall, or he's just one floor down. Some of those conveniences would be fantastic for other development groups to be talking about that want to participate in city government. So, you've got a lot of options there with additional space. You've got about twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, maybe thirty thousand square feet that you can add, that you could also lease out as space, and those leases could be set to where you're basically looking at, as the city grows and I need more square footage, I don't renew the lease the next year, and then I grow City Hall without buying another
From a design standpoint, we would work with the architects to help the building be finished out the way it-- for lack of a better word, and it's going to sound a little touchy-feely, the way it wants to be finished out, the way it needs to be finished out to best serve the city's purposes. There will be some floors where we use more square footage than other floors based on ceiling heights and other things, but it-- every single floor is extremely functional, and as you can see, it's built like a tank.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Here gives you just a black-and-white reference of the spacing and being cognizant of what could be in the future, and like I said, our design is definitely taking that into account, whether it be this building or a future building. Next slide, please. So, when we look at the comparisons, this is what we're looking at. If we do a total remodel of City Hall, we're looking at twenty-eight-point-five million. The one number that's not represented in there is actually waterproofing the north wall of City Hall that currently leaks into IT. Didn't have time to do a complete breakdown of what that number would be, but I would estimate it's probably going to be between seven-hundred-and-fifty to a million dollars to do that. So, you're looking at twenty-eight to twenty-nine-point-five million to bring this one up to standards, Amarillo Hardware Building. Because you don't have relocation costs, you're looking at thirty-one million.
I think it's important to note, when we look at thirty-one million, that's fully loaded.
Yes.
It doesn't-- I mean, apples to apples, we look at the amount of cost to renovate this building versus the amount of cost to renovate Amarillo Hardware, but if we're going to be spending the money on renovations, we need to make sure that whatever we build is consistent with all of our design standards. So, we do have over a million dollars put in for streetscaping, and then there's also the money that would be required to demolish and build parking spaces so that we would be able to adequately park the building for guests and also for employees. So, there is a lot of things on top of just the square-foot renovation cost for the building.
So, in the Amarillo Hardware comparison of costs, does that include demolishing City Hall, the current City Hall?
That number's not in that-- no. It's one-point-two.
To demolish--
To demolish the existing City Hall.
We have-- we need to demolish the other buildings to start using Amarillo Hardware because that's where the parking goes. We don't have to demolish City Hall to do that, although it would be wise to do it at the same time. I'm not saying that we have to do it. What we put into this comparison was what would we have to do to be able to use these two buildings, or one building or the other building. Demolition of existing City Hall would make a lot of sense if we wanted to go ahead and have the green space and make the future arena project feasible whenever, if and when council decides to do it. That does not assume that it's ever going to be done.
So, let me just clarify that, because what I'm looking at is it says building renovations on Amarillo Hardware, twenty-six-point-five million. And then, when you add in the other things like streetscape, demo of the parking lot buildings--
Demolition.
--A&E, then you get to thirty-one million.
That's correct.
So, I think the answer is yes, this number does reflect, and maybe that's what you said, and I just didn't follow.
No, that's what I was asking. Does-- Mayor, it deals with the demo of the three structures over there next to Amarillo Hardware.
But it doesn't include the demo of City Hall, per se.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Okay, because so what you're saying is the demolition of those two buildings, the one west and north, is a total of one-point-three million?
Correct.
Okay.
With parking lots.
Uh-huh, okay.
If we were to--
With parking lots.
To, yeah, to take those buildings down and surface them as parking.
And if we were to demolish this building and just make it plain old green space, no features, just grass, it's about a million dollars, right?
No, it's one-point-two to do the demolition and the green space.
And green space, okay.
And Jerry, you told me yesterday you had quoted this at current pricing or a projected price?
Right now, we're looking at a projected price. We're anticipating, as you're well aware, construction numbers are crazy right now, but we're looking at the raw commodities market. The trends are going down because the supply chain is so depleted currently. Cole, as you and I were talking about yesterday, structural steel was a part of our conversation. Not knowing what the federal government's going to do with China with regards to Chinese steel, we're seeing steel prices starting to come down because manufacturing has ramped up in the United States of steel. If they open the market back to Mexico and Chinese steel, then we'll see steel prices go back down, and that's the projections right now of all the major groups that we monitor. We're seeing concrete pricing has got a slight uptick, but not dramatic like what we're dealing with. Lumber packages are three times what they were, and-- but lumber's one of the things that once the sawmills get fully staffed, that number can come down a lot quicker. I don't think we'll ever see our numbers be what they were last year when we put some of these numbers together, but I think we're definitely going to be looking at anywhere from a ten to fifteen-- I think we're definitely going to be looking at anywhere from a 10 to 15% increase from early 2019 to the current pricing.
We are in a relatively, well, more volatile, relative is the wrong word, a more volatile construction material pricing
Correct.
environment than we've probably ever lived in. I think that we, Jerry would also concur that the relationship of these two price estimates will stay consistent whether pricing goes up or down for materials. The primary differences are preserving the ability to do the arena, having the drive-through, and having the more parking. And having, so aside from that, the relationship between pricing of the two options will stay consistent, proportional, or proportional.
So just getting an overall cost, demo of City Hall, 1.2 million if we were to look at that. And then moving costs, furniture, window treatments, et cetera, anything like that. Do you have any calculations on any of that?
As far as if we were to move into Amarillo Hardware, is that your question?
With the Amarillo Hardware.
That's embedded in this cost.
So that's included?
Yes, with FFE.
I think we've got.
We also have moving costs for this building included as well in that 28 and change million.
Know what the FFE was on that?
The FFE, when we looked at those numbers initially, we were looking at, right at 1.2. And of course, that number floats all over the place. If you tell me I want traditional construction with offices everywhere, that's one number. If you tell me you want the modern construction with the modern industrial look, that changes that number again. So there is some flexibility in there. And of course, whichever direction you go, we'll do our best to set that number. And once we set it, we'll do the job for that number, and we'll do it on time.
I think another thing that's important, at least as far as what we've used, as far as guiding principles as we put together estimates, whether here or at Amarillo Hardware, the assumption is that we're going to build for durability and for a kind of timeless, classic, classy look. There is no gilding of the lily. There is not going to be any, the council chamber will be functional. It will be large enough, and it will do the things we need to do, but it will not be ostentatious. I think, and I think that you probably all know that that's the way we go when we build anything. But I want to make sure that everyone understands that when we're putting numbers out, it does not include any type of extravagance.
So if I could add, I don't know that you have this, but in looking at your total cost on Amarillo Hardware or relocation, the difference there is you would have future lease spaces that you could lease in order to offset that cost.
Exactly. Yes, that would be an option.
Here you spend the money, you don't have any lease space.
And that's, exactly. That's a number that you, as a council, would direct me and how you want to approach that.
So you have not gathered and don't have any kind of pro forma on any kind of future lease space?
No, I have not. Basically, all we've taken a look at is the MEP would be sufficient to support those additional spaces. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing would be in place to support those as they develop. But as far as finish outs or those, I don't have any of that, or what that cost per square foot per lease was. I know that we took a look at what the cost per square foot for 40,000 people and what our costs were there, and that's how we determine the cost on the existing City Hall to move the, you know, to move that 40,000 square foot of staff someplace else, and what that was. And there's a big variable on that. Where do we find 40,000 square foot downtown to lease? There are structures in Amarillo, we can accomplish that, but there's not very many within five miles of the local City Hall, so.
I think to Councilmember Stanley's point, we do have the ability to create some revenue. We have not modeled what that revenue would look like. What I can tell you is that if we did do those leases, we would have language inside those leases that provided us the ability to notify them with an appropriate amount of notice, whether it's two years' notice, three years' notice, or whatever's appropriate, you know, given the market, before we needed to expand into that space. The nice thing about that building is that it does provide over 40,000 square feet of, well, 50,000, over 50,000 square feet of expansion space, whereas this building is renovating a building that we're basically fully occupying at already. And that is probably a big difference that we should have, you know, highlighted on the front end. However, whether we use the space to generate revenue, which I think is wise if somebody's interested in co-locating with city facilities, or whether we use that space as shell space that has been outfitted with HVAC and all those things necessary to make sure that we can fully operate the building if and when we, or when we expand into it, there's a lot of things we can do with that space even in the meantime. But I definitely think the best way to maximize value is, you know, leasing to private.
So to clarify that, the estimate here reflects not a warm white shell, but a warm shell, right?
Correct.
So you do have MEP calculated for the entirety of the facility?
Yes.
Okay, so all you're talking about is just the interior finish out cost for office space?
Right.
Kind of be like TI, I mean, the tenant improvements for that rest of that space.
But not a cold dark shell for 40,000 square feet?
None, none.
Okay. So what, do you know what the cost would be to get a preliminary bid? So if we were, if we wanted to get, if we wanted to direct you in a way to get some numbers back on that relocation, how much would you need to spend in order to get yourself to a place to get hard bids?
For a relocation of this to another lease space, of City Hall to another lease space?
No, I'm talking about the renovations of Amarillo Hardware building.
Oh, the renovation.
How much further do you need to go before you could, you could have something that's a hard cost that we could really make a good decision on?
We would have to have an architect that has brought a set of plans to you as a council to say, this is what we want it to look like, this is the way we want it to function. Let me get design costs close to 50% at that point in time, and then I could give you a hard number that we could set a budget off of and say, this is exactly what it'll cost to do this, once you give me the directions of what you want that facility to look like. Once we get to that point, we're actually at the point where I could actually go out for a CMAR at that time. And basically, we would do construction almost identical to the way we did the MPEV. The MPEV, when we started construction on it, we were at 50% design when we stuck the first shovel in the ground. And that's the benefit of the CMAR in a construction project of that size. It allows us to work with our contractor and negotiate scope, negotiate construction materials, everything that's relative to the construction process, short of the paint color, we can negotiate that. And that's what we did on the MPEV, and that's why we realized the savings that we did on the MPEV, to be quite frank.
Because we set the budget and you built to the budget.
We built to the budget. Now, our contractors
We actually built under budget, I might note.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And we got the full scope.
Good job, Jerry Danforth.
I think it's important to note for Jerry's purposes, that project originally, when the bids first came in on it, it was almost 38% over budget. And Jerry got the full scope for not paying that 37 and a half, almost 38%. So Jerry's a shrewd
There was
Jerry has a high level of trust based on performance of projects that we have seen him deliver, whether it's fire stations, admin space, or ballparks. You have delivered.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort. It's not just me. I mean, it takes a lot of faith by you as a council, a lot of work. I know that the city manager, I told him if I was going to swing, he's swinging with me. So it was a great effort, and I look forward to working with you on either project, whatever you decide. We'll do our best to make sure it comes out the way it needs to.
One more thought, and you may be able to speak to this, you may need to do some research on it. Right now, we're looking at an either or. Either remodel this fully, wholly, or relocate, remodel that, grow into that space. Either of those may be a really good decision for our community, but those are not the only two decisions that we have to make.
That's correct.
So unfortunately, you have some items that should have been replaced 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and they weren't. And so we are sitting in the position where we don't know that we can get another five years out of them.
Correct.
Are you able to put together some costs for a two-year outlook?
Sure. Will you switch to the next slide? If we don't do either of these, this is going to be your financial impact over the next two years. You will spend this much money because of
Just to heat this building?
Just to keep this building functional. That answers the question you have, and I appreciate the question. But you do have no choice but to work on the boiler systems, to work on the chiller systems, to work on the waste systems here within this building. And the HVAC, you know, if the Civic Center's running full out, it's hard for me to run their chiller system on top of City Hall and be able to maintain what our function. So it's a definite thing that we have to look at. We look at the front entrance. If we don't keep maintaining what we, I mean, we can keep maintaining it, but if we don't replace it, the risk and our exposure, we don't want anybody to get hurt. So we want to do our job right. We want to protect our public. We want to, we want to have the right face for our customers that come to see us and do business with us. And so that's another piece that you will have to look at. And I'm looking at, you know, the A and E cost to do that because we have to change those designs. I'm looking at close to half a million dollars just in that area alone. But this will be, to answer your question, in the next two years, you will spend that much money here.
Jerry, can you go back to the slide before this?
Sure.
What year was Amarillo Hardware built?
Amarillo Hardware was actually built in two phases. There's two buildings there.
Just ballpark me a beginning of the day.
The original building was built in the 20s.
Okay, so as far as seeing concrete deterioration or cast iron pipe deterioration, I mean, either that stuff was already fixed, and we're now in a second life cycle of it, or it was built at a time where such quality of products were used that we're not, we're not seeing that kind of damage at that building. Is that correct?
You're not, your concrete is not experiencing the same issues you have here because you don't have a park built around your building over there. Basically, it's all hard surface, and the water drains away from the building.
Okay, so
The water sands next to the building, so the concrete, the plumbing and the MEP doesn't exist over there. There's none there. There's the restroom in the Amarillo Hardware building, there's one restroom on every floor, and it's got one commode. And so, trust me, that won't suffice. So we've got to, we've got to change that. The newer section of the building does have a few more amenities, but not much. So really, when we look at the Amarillo Hardware building, we're truly just looking at a shell. That's all that's there.
But one of the things that I think is important to note on this comparison is Amarillo Hardware is a historic building downtown, currently sitting vacant. And it is a benefit, I think, to our community to use it. The best way to preserve a historic building is to use it.
Correct.
And so I think that is something that's not reflected in this side-by-side comparison. Okay, other questions? Excellent questions so far. This is definitely a time for, four of us have been on this journey and have had a lot of hours poured into the knowledge of the needs of this building. But Cole, I appreciate the time he spent last week, or first of this week, touring and meeting to get up to speed. So thank you, Cole, for that. But certainly, every question is welcome, and now's a good time for questions because they're ready for us to steer them. We're going to have to give them some direction on which option do we want to see the next, you know, data on. And they, they need to know where to why in the road now. So let's ask questions, and let's kind of have some dialogue to give them the direction that you would like to see them go.
I'll make a statement.
Okay.
My first statement is, is I have no interest in remodeling the current existing City Hall. I feel like it is a, it would not be a judicious use of our money at all. There's no future, really, in this building. There's no expansion opportunity. There's not a lot of other things that give us, if we're going to look down the road at what we want to see Amarillo in 10, 20, 30 years, this cannot be part of it. So I'm going to be more interested in us doing one of two things, either pushing hard towards the Amarillo Hardware building or continuing to patch this building. And that's the way that I look at it. I see the five and a half million dollars is nothing, is more than just patchwork, because you're still going to have to address, I mean, there's, there's even issues with this current council chamber that we are not able to address. And so I think we've got to do one of two things. Either we just continue to patch, or we get serious about looking at what we want to see the future of Amarillo be. And that's kind of the way that I see it. I see that we've got a lot of opportunities with the Amarillo Hardware building, the fact that now then we can provide customer service access. That's been one of the things that we've talked about a lot over the past four years, is trying to change the culture of the customer service here. And I think that that's integral to that, is having that ability to do that. And I think it would be, another customer service thing would be to have room, 50, 60,000 square feet, that could then be developed for partners that are going to be partners with the city long, long after I'm around here. And I think that's going to be an important aspect for us that we've got to consider. I think we can't, personally, we can't just consider the here and now. I think, in my estimation, I'm going to want to look at what the best long-term outlook is going to be for the city.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd say I agree with what Eddie Sauer just said, but I have another question. A lot of companies through this COVID have determined that they don't need as big a space as they thought they did, people working from home. Is that practical for us?
I'll tell you my experience with what we've done. We've, we can function with some people at home, but we cannot do it for extended periods. We can allow them to do, to have the flexibility, certain positions. When I say certain positions, I do not mean things like any of our outdoor positions or any of our utility building. But there are certain things like engineers, architects, things that can do work for a, not an extended period at a remote location. So we have not seen any savings in space that we can permanently attribute to the remote working capabilities. We're just a little bit different because of, almost all the positions that we have are designed to either provide a service outside or to actually interact with the public. I don't, I don't mean to say that 100% of our positions are that way. We can't, we do have the capacity to use some of them at home. But I'm not aware of any off the top of my head that we can permanently not assign workspace to.
Thank you.
One other thought here, just in your total timeframe, I would estimate, you know, six months to get plans, bids, everything teed up and ready to go, maybe an 18-month turnaround over there, couple months to move. You're talking two, two and a half years, weather delays, other issues. We can be in a three-year turnaround real quick. You're still in this building for three years. So did we spend the 5.5 million while we spent the 31 million over there? Or are we just hoping for the best on this ship?
Well, I think you're in a scenario, the boilers are something we have to address. Yeah, we made it through with those two. If we were in a scenario like that, I would work in conjunction with Mr. Miller and say, you know, I barely made it through by the skin of my teeth with two units. I say, let's buy one more unit instead of changing out and doing the whole four-unit package. We cut that cost down. The chiller, I'm in the process of looking at rebuilding one of the chillers at the Civic Center. If I can get that rebuilt in time, maybe we can still run both buildings if this one goes down. We would do everything we could do to cut that cost. I just have to be realistic when I, because I don't want to come in front of you and say, you know, I thought we could do it, and we can't do it.
And let me add, in that, from that frame of thought, if we're trying to figure out how do we make it two and a half to three years, we would keep doing exactly what we're doing. Because some of the key components we have, we do have some compatibility with the old components at Civic Center. Now, we could very realistically, within five to 10 years, be having this exact same conversation at the Civic Center, where, the reason why we're not having that conversation right now, even though we have been having the Civic Center conversation for more than 10 years, but on the mechanical side, the reason why we're not having that exact conversation right now is because we have so much more redundancy at the Civic Center. The capacity that we have there, and the amount of time that they run full capacity at the Civic Center is different from here. We run full capacity here all the time with a quarter of the hardware, or a quarter of the infrastructure from chilling and boiler standpoint. of the infrastructure, from chilling, from chilling and boiler standpoint, from a chiller and boiler standpoint. It's about one quarter, right?
Right.
So we have four here, they have 16 there, from a boiler standpoint. So we can, and they still have eight of the old boilers there. Well, we still have seven of the old boilers there. So we've got 17 over there. We stole one.
We've got one here.
So we're actually running at a diminished capacity at the Civic Center because of what we had to do here. We, strictly speaking, we do have the ability to steal from the Civic Center, however, that's not a sustainable model. If we did that, the assumption would be that we would take that old one, that we, anything we steal from there, once we move out of here, we would have to move that old one back over there. So it's a Peter and Paul situation. I don't think, I, I think it's very realistic that we can spend a minimal amount of money over the next two and a half to three years here, using the same mindset that we've been using for the last three years here. Basically, I don't want to spend any more money than what we have to spend. And anytime Jerry's got a project he has to do here at City Hall, we talk about it. Whether it's IT, because there's technology stuff that we've had to do over the last few years, there's bathroom repairs that we've had to do. We had a major leak on the third, well, right over here in the wall, a year and a half ago.
Right.
That, that basically shut down the building for a day, a day or two.
It was a council day.
Oh, that's right. It was a council day.
And it took the elevators down.
It took the elevators out of service because the water was.
Cost me another $20,000.
Water was flowing down the elevator shafts like a waterfall. So we do have some exposures here, but I think that we can keep doing what we've been doing. It's not a sustainable posture, but can we, can we, can we make it until we get to the future? Yes, I think we absolutely can without spending five and a half million dollars. Maybe we have to spend, you know, a few hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're, you're probably looking at, from a very conservative standpoint, around a half million. But if you're telling me that this is our, and, and I, I want to be very clear, I'm not trying to steer one way or another. You tell me what direction you want me to go and that's, I'm going to charge full forward. If you're telling me this is what we want to do, or if you tell me we want to build out by the airport, I, I really don't have a dog in the hunt, other than what you tell me you want, that's what you're going to get and you're going to get the best you can.
I, I do think you're bringing up a good point, and that is, we have had a plan in the past. I mean, the plan before was in November, so that we would already have, we'd be finishing design right now and bidding out construction. So that's something to keep in mind that, yes, you can put things on a timeline, it doesn't always go the way you think it needs to, and next thing you know, you're down to one boiler. So that's real.
So Mr. Danforth, I'm always in favor of trying to protect what we have. And considering this building, City Hall, is more than 50 years old, we're, we're past that point, we're not structurally sound, and every day that goes by, there's going to be deterioration. So we have to move forward to do something. I'm not in favor of doing patches or Band-Aid fixes, you know, because that's what we're looking at right now. And the sooner that we can move forward on this project, the better. And the other thing that's a big concern to me is our employees here at City Hall. That's my first concern, because of their safety. And then second, our citizens or our customers that use this building, day in and day out. You know, we've been very fortunate that we haven't had, you know, any major accidents just coming into the front steps of City Hall. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of, of moving forward on the project and certainly agree with the conversation that we've just had. So I'm, I'm ready to move.
Councilmember Stanley?
Yeah, I think if we, if we take a two-position look at it here, I, I think if you're looking at this, and this old truck's got some miles on her and we don't know how much further it'll go, but right now, it's expensive. Interest rates are low, which is good. So we don't want to handicap ourselves and not be in a position to make a good decision going forward. So I think that we should look at the best deal that we could make across the street. And that would be by looking at, you know, future LOIs, if we have anybody interested that we could put on paper and see how much we could offset this upfront cost. How good of a deal could we make with our, you know, tax dollars in, in pushing this direction so that we don't have, I guess, the dreaded word of tax increase or something like that? So can, can we avoid this and do it within a good budget and be a good steward of the money? I, I also agree, I think you have an aged building and I think that you are going to continue to chase it with money. You know, so it, it'll start off at a million and a half and end up being five and then so on and so forth. And if we're a little bit landlocked for future growth, then it really handicaps those councils that are coming after us. So I don't want to be nearsighted. I would want to look at the future, but I don't like the climate. And I think we all should be conservative.
What does that mean? I don't like the climate?
Just in construction costs. I don't like the construction cost climate right now. And then the volatility in the market, I know, you know, historically, it's hard to say construction ever comes back down, but we've never seen an increase like we're seeing right now. And we should see some sort of recoil in materials. Now, we may not see those labor costs come back down, but I definitely don't think now is the best time to buy retail. And I think that if, if we, if we slow-played this a little bit, but we went ahead and did our homework and we put some things on paper that we all had teed up and ready to go, it may benefit us in the future. So I would like to see if we can dig in a little bit more on what that building could become in the way of future lease spaces and cost, and then how much would be the hard cost to finish engineering and, and architecture, so that we could go ahead and, and be ready to get cost out, be ready to hire somebody if we chose to. And then on this guy right here, if, if we could get a list of what does a million dollars get you?
Okay.
And how many years does that get us down the road?
I think you're hearing a consensus that the investment needs to be made at Amarillo Hardware. Are we right on that, counsel?
Yes.
Okay. We may still have some work to do on what the timing is, and like we said before, previous council at least has a very high level of trust in knowing that we can hand you a project, Jerry, and know that it's going to be done under budget, on budget, and that you're going to work all of those angles for us. And so we're trusting you to go out and to manage construction costs, and we've seen that happen. You've brought us a project, you brought us a fire station that said, and you said, we're asking you to speed up and do this in a hurry. If you don't do it now, it's going to be 30% more than what we had budgeted for it. And we got behind you and we said, all right, let's do it. We pulled the trigger and you got that built, and we got it built at the lower price. So, so we have this trust of relationship with you and knowing your expertise and knowing that you're looking for ways to save the city money on every project. And some of that's timing, and some of that's design, and some of that's the city, like we moved the dirt at Hodge Town ourselves. So I mean, we know that you're always looking for those angles. What I know is that this building is done. It's, it's actually carried us way past the finish line. So if somebody used to run the 400-meter dash, I mean, it is no fun to run the 410 or the 420, right? And this building has done that for us. And I, I don't even want to know what meter we're on with this building. And even just, yeah, we might be close to an 800. But just thinking about the legacy that those city leaders built in 1966, if you just took a new building and added 55 years to it from today, that would be 2076. And it's really hard for us to even conceptualize something that far in the future. So I'm so grateful for the work that they did, the investment that they made. And you start running the numbers, the 31 million, if you divide that by 55, that's about $560,000 a year to have a city hall that meets the needs of our citizens. This city hall, because we're here every day, we can see how far short it falls of meeting our citizens' needs. I mean, all you have to do is to sit down in the lobby and watch parents who don't have a place to put their kids, so they've got a couple of kids while they stand in line to pay their water bill, and that's what people walk into, which was great back in 1966. We have way outgrown that and it no longer meets our needs. That's just one very small example. The governor arriving at our back door, essentially, to come into our basement is another example. And there are lots of those examples. This building has served us well, but it is past its time. So I'm ready to see us move to the future. And it has a lot of potential. If you want to do an analysis on what, you know, retail or office space might look like, that's fine, I think. We have to be prepared for if it doesn't go. So, you know, we're just asking the question right now. We're just asking the question. But I think what you have is a consensus that Amarillo Hardware is the next step. And frankly, I think sooner is better than later. So we've, we've got to figure out how to get over there. The quicker we get over there, the less we spend here. And those are taxpayer dollars that will go to fix potholes, pay police salaries, and, and upgrade our parks. So everything we don't spend on chillers and boilers here is something that we still have available to us in the general fund to do other projects. So what else do you need from us? You've got a consensus to look forward to Amarillo Hardware being our next city hall? Next steps, Jared?
And we have all the input we need at this point. We will, in very short order, bring some options for counsel to give us additional guidance on, based on this feedback.
Okay, because I think the next steps are determining timeline and talking about budget. Am I right? Anything else, counsel?
Part of that's going to be identifying our architect, be working on, on design to be able to inform us for those other discussions. So that's going to be something we're going to bring to you in very short order.
Okay, any other thoughts? Anything from the right side of the table? Anything from the left side?
We could also go with weak side.
I used to say, anything from the ladies, anything from the gentlemen, but I think place one might have a problem with that. So we've got to figure out, got to figure out the new language.
Just tell me I'm pretty.
Yeah, well, I'm not going there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. We appreciate you very much. Okay, item 1D is a update on Thompson Park Pool. Mr. City Manager?
Right, thank you, Mayor. We have been giving regular updates for the last month on Thompson Park Pool as we get closer and closer to Memorial Day, which was our targeted open date. We have had an unprecedented amount of weather challenges throughout this winter, and I think everyone will recall all the winter challenges and rain challenges we've had. And then even after the last update we did two weeks ago, we've had, I want to say, I don't want to, maybe not a full week.
Seven and a quarter inches.
Okay. Yeah, we had seven and a quarter inches, but we've lost a full week of, of the last two weeks, on top of what we thought was going to push us to Juneteenth. So we're pressing, and, and I'm going to let Michael give you the latest on where we're at with open date for Thompson Park Pool. We are pushing this, I, I do want to, before Michael talks, I do want you to know that we are pushing the contractor as hard as we possibly can. We are facilitating their efforts as much as we possibly can, and we are doing everything that we possibly can, using our staff, to make sure that we can hit as early a date as possible. In no way do we want to use weather as an excuse, but it is what it is. It's not an excuse, it's just, we're telling you some of the challenges we're facing with trying to get this across the line with what was already a compressed construction timeline from the day one. So, Michael, go.
Mayor and counsel, Michael Kishuba. I'll just elaborate on that very briefly. Obviously, as soon as we did the update, we got rain. So I don't know if we want to keep doing updates. I guess if we get seven and a quarter inches rain, it doesn't hurt. Obviously, we're at the point in the construction where the, the shell of the pool is ready, a lot of the stuff for the pool and the pool components are done, it's the site work. So the seven and a half inches of rain, when you start trying to do the deck for the pool, the landscape, the fencing, it really poses a challenge. So we're working with the, the contractor, he's got a concrete crew on site every day, and they are making forward progress, obviously, on the deck and trying to get that finished up as quickly as possible. Realistically, we're looking at pushing that deadline seven to 10 days because of the weather. Obviously, there was three or four days of heavy rain, and then for the site to dry out again, to be able to get big trucks in there, construction crews in there, it really has pushed it from somewhere between that seven and 10-day mark. So we're working as, as closely as we can with Wiley Hicks to get that done as quickly as possible. Their crews are going in early, they're working Saturdays, they're doing whatever they can. The weather just hasn't been our friend this last couple of weeks. So we're, we're pushing and we'll, we'll get it done as quickly as we can, but we're looking at about a seven to 10-day delay. So we're looking at the week following Juneteenth is, is really what we're looking at as the open date.
At, at what point, the weekend following Juneteenth or sometime during the week?
We would probably do a ribbon cutting either the Friday or the Saturday morning. So depending on counsel's availability.
After Juneteenth, so the mid twenties?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions on that, counsel?
No. Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I would just like for us to continue to receive those updates. I think it would be good.
Uh huh, okay, noted.
We're going to absolutely keep the updates until we have it open. We, and I'll tell you, we were, if we were going to have to push back from, from Memorial Day, we were kind of excited, given the fact that the pool is in the North Heights, that it might inadvertently and through no design have, have wanted to be open on Juneteenth. And we thought that would have been a great, it would have been a great opportunity. And, and we're really disappointed we're not going to be able to hit that.
Okay, anything else for Michael? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, just to make you aware, we do have a press conference set for 3:30 that involves the AEDC and item 3G. So we're going to take item 1E and then be finished with our Section 1 discussion part of the agenda, and then we're going to make a quick jump over to item 3G, do that quickly, and go down to room 105 to do the press conference. Okay, so everybody just is on board with what we're, I told you, I was going to need patience and flexibility from you. So, all right, let's do, quickly, item 1E, please, Mr. City Manager.
Right, Mayor, we're going to be talking about city water tower emblem policies. We have Andrew Freeman to present the item. We also have potential assistance from Emily Kohler. So, Andrew?
Yes, sir. And I'll go very quickly since we had such a great introduction and public comment. So, little background, as mentioned during the public comment, this is related to the San Jacinto Neighborhood Plan that was adopted back in February. So we have been working with the committee on one of their goals, which was to see a logo or emblem put on the, on the tower. Historically, this is not something that the city does or really has a policy for. So that's what's brought us here today, is really to get feedback from counsel. One, I think everybody supports this, but how do we get there as far as approving it? So the association is also currently fundraising for the project, so this will give them more security as far as we know we can do the project. It'll help us fundraise and move forward. Clicker's not working. Can you click for me, Jenny? There we go. So again, just a little background, we typically do not paint water towers with a logo or an emblem. We do have an adopted ordinance from November 2017 that council approved related to naming streets, renaming streets. It's a petition process. We also had a similar structure for parks or buildings. We didn't know if that might be a way to try and address this, but it's a little bit different scenario since this is really a branding opportunity to the city as far as whether to put a logo on it or put something that's nationally, historically significant as far as tourism or pride goes as far as the community and what we're trying to accomplish with the design. So part of, part of the last ordinance, it does lay out the petition for those name changes. It also details who pays for it. Typically, we just pay for the base level paint, and if somebody wants to do something differently as far as materials, that would be at their cost. So that's part of the fundraising effort and the coordination with the neighborhood. So we could look at maybe amending that ordinance, it could be a standalone resolution policy just for water towers, or maybe it's just something informal as far as we bring the project for the paint job and y'all approve it through that process. So really, we're just here today just to get some direction from council as far as appetite for addressing a neighborhood plan goal that's really brought this forward. And we also, as far as timing, in this next budget adoption is when you consider paying for the paint job, as far as just the base level paint, and then next spring is when it would actually occur, just as far as timing on when that design and everything would take place. They're currently designing it right now.
And I think it's important to note, some cities will paint high school logos, some cities will paint private businesses as a component of an economic development deal. See, Buda, Texas has.
Cabela's.
Cabela's, yeah, on a, on a water tower that they painted on there as part of an economic development deal. Numerous cities have painted high school mascots and city logos and a lot of other things that are, well, and the city logo obviously is city-related, but they've also done a lot of other things that are not necessarily city-related. We have never painted any logo of any kind on any of our water towers. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, the challenge here is we don't have any policy to guide what we're doing. We do want to avoid the slippery slope that comes when you start doing non-city-related things, whether it's schools and there's no, we don't, we have whether it's schools and there's no, we don't, we have no animus against AISD, CISD, or any of our other school districts. It's just there's a slippery slope there. Once you go to school districts, you're talking about nonprofits, you're talking about a lot of other things, and there's cost with all of that. So, we just wanted to have that conversation so that you can provide us feedback and give us a very clear box in which to work. Box is probably the wrong word, but clear guidelines as far as what council's expectations are.
Okay, council thoughts on this?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah?
So, how often do we, I know that there's a rotation, so how often do we paint the towers?
That's going to be a question for Floyd or Jonathan.
Mayor and Council, Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager, Development Services. Typically, a paint job on a water tower will last anywhere from 10, 15, up to 20 years, depending on the quality that that painting was initially done. But yes, this is on a rotation basis such that we don't have that challenge every year on a water tower.
And there's also a vast range of types of coatings that we can put on a water tower, and they all have dramatically different lifespans, and also different prices.
So, when was the last time this one was painted?
Probably a little over 10 years ago, I don't have the exact date.
So, in other words, we're coming within a good distance of it needing to be repainted anyway.
Right. We were already planning for it, so this is just-
So, we've already planned for it, so we'd just be moving it up?
Not even, not even moving it up, just coordinating on the same schedule. It's ready, we're designing it this year and funding it next year.
Really, what we're doing is identifying, what would it cost to paint it? And then what's the delta between what it would cost to paint it and what it would cost to paint it with an emblem on there?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'll say this, I think this is a slam dunk, there's, there's no slippery slope associated with printing Historic 66 on a water tower in Amarillo that's intended to draw people to Sixth Street. I think there's, that's not even a question. I think we just need to figure out, how do we get it done? And that would be my bottom line.
True.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts from the council?
Let's get it done.
All right, that's place four.
Yes, I want to get it, I want to move forward with the project as well. But also, going forward, you know, if we have another neighborhood that wants to paint something on a water tower, are we going to have some sort of criteria or guidance under the street naming policy? Or do we do it under an ordinance? And we already have this particular one in place. If we were to update it or add this to it, what's our timeframe or our process to do that without slowing down the project?
Right, and that was what we looked at initially, and it'd basically be an ordinance change to that section. And we could tie it, maybe some closer parameters as far as historically significant or city significant as far as doing it. Not really open to, just bring us any idea you want for a logo for the tower, so.
And we can bring that to you in very short order.
Very quickly, yes.
Yes, because I just, I mean, I like consistency, so when the next citizen comes to us, you know, wanting to do this, then we can, we can pull out the ordinance and we can say, okay, does it meet the criteria?
Certainly.
Mr. Stanley?
So, with the existing ordinance, you're going to, you're going to alter that, modify that? Is that your recommendation?
That would probably be the quickest path to modify the ordinance, yes, sir.
Just to include water tower as street or something else?
And just have its extra section on criteria specifically to that.
Process of approval doesn't change at all, right? Still goes through the same process, they're going to, you submit it. And then on this particular one, I know we're all hoping that it would come to fruition, but we're still looking at the neighborhood associations fundraising the amount of money to get that done, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The majority of the funds available to neighborhoods is bond money from 2016, and it's very specific as far as being used in the street right of way. Wouldn't qualify for water tower paintings.
Okay.
Okay. My preference would be for us to amend that existing ordinance. I like the language as far as city logo or emblem with historical significance that would help with city branding or recognition. I would also like there to be something stating, blank is also okay. Like, like we're not necessarily having to brand every single visual point of the city. So, I want the policy to indicate that, that there should be something significant, and this group of citizens, I think, has identified something that is significant enough that it should be branded in the highest place in the city. But I think if we could draft that so that we somehow indicate, we also value having-
Blue water tower?
Yeah, well, we're not necessarily demanding or inviting that every high place in the city be branded or logoed. So, work your magic pencil.
We could also look at language as far as life cycle of when it needs to come up, so we're not just painting something every few years or-
And I think something needs to be developed for, you know, if they've got that for a five-year period or a 10-year period, how does it come off?
Or refreshed or-
Or how does it get refreshed? It shouldn't stay up, if it's branding, and we're using this for the city to be recognizable, it shouldn't be recognizable looking shoddy. So, we've got to have a plan in play, and I know that, no, the citizens that are behind this project don't want that either. So, we should be having those dialogues on the front end, just like we have had with Hodge Town, about those seats are going to start looking shoddy, season seven, eight, nine, whatever that is, and we have a plan to change the seats out so that our stadium always looks sharp. What are we going to do, because this is different than a street sign, which is going to be more durable and less expensive to replace. This needs to have a, an onboarding, offboarding component to it. And I also think design is a really, really big deal. You know, not everybody has an eye for design, so even just looking at what's in our paper here, you know, the size of the logo and all of that, I think we need a process inside there. Nobody questions what the size of a street sign should be, because street's going to tell us, well, you know, standard is this, and reflectivity is this, and- So, we need to have less subjective design criteria, or a panel of three people appointed. And no offense, but it probably shouldn't be the city attorney that's approving the design.
Oh, absolutely not.
It needs to be someone who has that skillset and can say, that logo's too small for that gigantic water tower. Or that's not going to accomplish what they want, because they want it to be recognizable, and it's, either it's ugly, the paint colors clash, or- So, design has to be captured in there somehow, or else we're going to have put something ugly.
Right.
And I'm not saying this, this logo is not ugly, ladies, don't hear me saying that.
And we've had that discussion with the parameters of the tower, how tall can the logo be to-
As we're creating this policy, we're using you as our guinea pig, and we have to create it in a way that we can, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll do it.
So, those are my concerns. Anybody else?
And I think that's good, looking down the road. Do you, does the current ordinance already have an architectural review procedure written in it?
The way the current one, depending on the building or the type, it's supposed to go through like the committee most affected by it, like parks, we go to the Parks Board to weigh in before it comes to council. So, we can look and see, it might need a specific committee, we can look at that language as far as who should review it. But, we can look at that.
Okay, so y'all will bring us something on the ordinance.
Yes.
Meanwhile, they can move forward with raising money.
Absolutely.
Knowing there's some certainty to the door being open.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
I've got staff working on, what is the cost of the painting going to be? What is, what would the cost of the logo be? We need to provide, and we may have already provided that information to them, have we?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been communicating.
Never mind then.
Yes.
Disregard, you already have that.
We've been working on that.
Okay, great, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, ladies, for making time and for carrying this project, it's going to be great, we appreciate you. Okay, last thing, item 1F, request future agenda items or reports from the city manager. Council, do we have anything on that item?
I would like for us to address putting, we talked about it kind of around about, about putting somebody from the Texas Tech Vet School on the-
Animal Management?
Animal Management Welfare Advisory Board, and what it would take to end up, because we have a spot that is open, and it would be really good to put somebody from Texas Tech immediately onto that spot, and then how do we, does it take an ordinance? What does it take? Because I think probably with our relationship with Texas Tech, it should become a standing deal that somebody from Texas Tech Vet School would be sitting on that advisory board.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, can we work on that?
Yeah, absolutely, we can have that on the upcoming agenda. We do need to make some board appointments, including AMW and four or five, actually six or seven other, other boards. We could do those mid-year, I know that's not preferable, but we can do them all at one time. If we're going to be making one appointment, let's do everything that we can make. So, we will bring changes to that policy in the meeting before we come with, or at least in an agenda item, before we would be making those appointments, if that's something that council wants me to bring to you as something to discuss.
Yes, and I think we just need to settle into having a June catch-up appointment session. I think it's working great to do those appointments in November and aggregate all of that into one meeting, but inevitably, we have people move or pass away or resign. And so, I think it's a good idea for us, from a city secretary point of view, to schedule a June catch-up. For one thing, we've had a council member change, so all of those positions that Council Member Hayes was serving on, we need to slot someone into those different boards, so. Okay, let's plan to have that on the next agenda then.
We'll have the guiding documents that speak to AMW in front of that board appointment session.
Great, okay, anything else, council?
I think I'll have a report from the Animal Management Welfare Advisory Board, and I think the Arts of Beautification is the day of our next meeting, so I'll have those two.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's quickly shift over to item 3G, which is considering the approval of a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and the American Quarter Horse Association. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, as I know all, our city council and really probably quite frankly, all of our community knows, AQHA has been something that has been the discussed and possible departure of AQHA, and also efforts to retain AQHA has been something of a lot of discussion over the past two years. So, to hopefully bring this whole conversation to a conclusion, we have Kevin Carter, CEO, Executive Director of AEDC. I know I got that all wrong, Kevin, but-
It's all good. Mayor, council, thank you for having me today. This item is to consider approval of a location incentive agreement between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and the American Quarter Horse Association. In 2019, we started visiting with the American Quarter Horse about keeping the Quarter Horse Association here in Amarillo. There were several talks of the Quarter Horse Association going to Fort Worth, there was a big push, and several million dollars were spent on trying to make that move to Fort Worth. And so, the Quarter Horse Association is a large part of our fabric here in Amarillo. They've been here since 1946, for 75 years, they've been a part of our history. They're a $25 million impact to our economy, and that doesn't count the intangible impact that they have on our city with having a world headquarters here in Amarillo, Texas, and that's huge. Before I kind of get into the meat of that, I would like to introduce a couple of people that are here today. One is Chad Pierce, he's the interim Executive Vice President of the American Quarter Horse Association. And then also a longtime board member of the American Quarter Horse Association, Johnny Trotter.
Welcome, welcome to both you men.
This agreement would keep the Quarter Horse here for at least the next 10 years. The Quarter Horse would agree to have at least $9 million in annual payroll over that period. And the AEDC would provide $300,000 per year for that, for over 10-year, each year for 10-year period, for a total of a $3 million incentive. Also with that, that is not part of this agreement that I want to mention, and we'll mention later in the press conferences, there's a, there's private citizen group that's putting together another $2 million to keep the Quarter Horse here. What a great thing for our city to put together a public-private partnership to keep one of our historical businesses here, and one of our longest-running businesses that have been here in Amarillo. And so, the Amarillo EDC staff is recommending approval of this agreement. Our board approved this on May 18th, with a 5-0 vote approved that incentive. So, I would certainly entertain any questions that you might have about this agreement.
Questions, council? Okay.
There are some clawbacks with this. If the AQHA falls below $6 million in annual payroll, they have to pay back the, the amount that they've received. And so, there are clawbacks and protections for the taxpayer with this incentive, so.
Great, well, we are excited about this. A lot of work has gone into this, a lot of conversations.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of considering the needs, as well as the future needs, and how the tools that we have in the toolbox here in Amarillo can meet those needs. So, I just want to thank you, Kevin, on behalf of the city, for the work that your economic development team has done. And obviously, want to thank the partners that are here from the Quarter Horse Association. You guys have roots here personally, and your families have roots here, but your organization's roots are very, very important to us, and we're really excited. Not to mention, I just, I was kind of excited to get to poke the mayor of Fort Worth about it, but- That's because I'm competitive and I don't like to lose. She did invite me to come and run in the Fort Worth marathon with her, and I declined, because she probably would beat me, but-
See, all their, all their frenemies?
We're, we're not frenemies at all, we're friends. She has been a good mentor to me, and she'll be closing her term out in just a matter of days, so. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a wonderful project that a lot of moving parts made that possible, not just one group, not just the city, not just AEDC, but private citizens getting together, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Council, do we have a motion with regard to item 3G?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the location incentive agreement between the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and the American Quarter Horse Association in the amount of $3 million, with annual disbursements of $300,000 per year for the next 10 years.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Council Member Smith to approve this LIA between Amarillo EDC and the American Quarter Horse Association. Any further discussion or questions from the council about the motion? Okay, hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, council, I think looking at our time, we do have time to go back and do the consent agenda, so on, if you're following us, it's item 2 on our large agenda today. Consent items, anything there that needs to come off for further discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Council Member Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay. What do you think, Mr. City Manager?
I don't, I think we probably should break. We'll take a bathroom break and go down and do this 3:30 press conference, and aim to be back here to pick up this meeting at 3:45. It is posted, am I right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
So, council, we would enjoy having all of you there at the Quarter Horse Press Conference in room 105, and any of you.
And I would also add, even if it wasn't, this is a ceremonial event, and council is allowed to be there without it being posted.
Okay, great, I just want to know that-
But we do tend to post these things, just to make sure that everyone understands everything's being done by our board.
The five of us don't want to go to jail, that's what it really goes down to.
And I want you to stay not in jail.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we will have items 3D, E, F, H, I, and J, along with executive session after we get back.
Yes, so we'll take a pause right here, thank you. Okay.
Ma'am.
I'm going to call us back into session then, and we're going to head right to Agenda Item 3D, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance rezoning the most northwestern 60 feet, as described in the rest of that, I'm not going to read it out loud. Mr. City Manager, who do we have for this presentation?
All right, we have Brady Kendrick, Planner 2, ready to make his first presentation to our city council, so say hello to Brady Kendrick.
Welcome, Mr. Kendrick.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Brady was excited to make his first presentation, was chomping at the bit. Andrew is giving him his shot right now, and you can look forward to seeing- him his shot right now, and you can look forward to seeing Brady very frequently from now on.
Yep.
Great, take it away.
Brady, I hope I didn't put too many words in your mouth.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a presentation of Item D, Public Hearing to Consider an Ordinance Rezoning of the Most Northwestern 60 Feet by 125 Feet of Lot 2A, Block 25, Lawrence Park Edition, Unit Number 114, in Section 227, Block 2, A, B, and M Survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from general retail district to light commercial district. The vicinity is southwest 26th Avenue and Patterson Drive, and the applicants are William and Barbara Frank for 26th Street Venture LLC. On the screen, you can see the vicinity map showing the applicant's track in the yellow hatching, yellow hatching, and the existing adjacent zoning. On the next slide is an aerial image of the area showing the existing development in the area. The applicant is requesting the just-mentioned rezoning to develop the full site that they own with a automotive repair shop. The proposed use would be allowed on the remainder of the site, shown in green, but the northwestern corner, shown in yellow, which is zone general retail, will not allow for the proposed use. In order to utilize this northwestern portion of the site for the proposed use, a change in zoning is required. The request conforms to the future land use and character map, the development type, and given its location and existing development and zoning patterns in the area is an appropriate location for the request. Notices were sent to all property owners within 200 feet, as required by state law. As of this meeting, no comments have been received regarding the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the request with a 5 to 0 vote. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Anything, Council? Thank you, Brady. Good job on your first presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the meeting to a public hearing. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item will have three minutes at the podium to do so. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about this item? Seeing no one, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning the most northwestern 60 feet by 125 feet portion of Lot 2A, Block 25, Lawrence Park Edition, Unit 114, in Section 227, Block 2, A, B, and M Survey, Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from general retail district to light commercial district. And this is in the vicinity of southwest 26th Avenue and Patterson Drive.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by the entire left side of the table, but we'll choose Dr. Sauer to approve Item 4E. Any further discussion or questions about the motion as made? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. And I will recognize that we have two members here today from the staff of the Wesley Center. So, Liz and Jerry, thank you guys for patiently waiting as this meeting did this all over the agenda, but we appreciate the work that you do, and we're excited to see the growth that you have planned. And Brady, I will just say internally, I'm sure the guys were laughing that your very first item, you had to read the longest legal description I think we've ever seen on this. So, the next person who has to do their first item, the challenge is to create a longer legal description than you have to read, right? Okay, Item 3F, I'm sorry, 3E. Sorry, I got those backwards, didn't I? Okay, y'all's item is coming, but thank you for being here for that. Now, we're on 3E, so go, you ready, Mr. City Manager for Brady?
Yes, ma'am, and I would say, I didn't mean to call too much attention to you, Brady. I will say that in all seriousness, to our council and to our community, one of the best ways to develop our planners is the opportunity to make presentations to our community and to our council. You saw this with Cody Balzen, and he's done great things with the city and still with us, sort of through the NPO, and we expect great things from Brady. I haven't had an opportunity to meet Brady, so this is a great chance for me to meet him as well, although Andrew spoke very highly of you while we were talking about the agenda. So, Brady, appreciate you being here.
No problem.
Really didn't mean to call too much attention to you and make you uncomfortable. You've done great so far, so this is trial by fire.
All right, go, Brady.
Yep. Item E is a presentation of a rezoning of a 2.912 acre portion of Lot 9, Block 109, South Lawn Edition, Unit Number 36, in Section 184, Block 2, A, B, and M Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to rezone from Residential District 1 to Residential District 1 with specific use permit 198 for an institution of religious, charitable, or philanthropic nature. The vicinity is Darrell Avenue and Austin Street, and the applicant is Liz Olinese for Amarillo Wesley Community Center. On the screen, you can see the vicinity map showing the applicant's track in the yellow-hatched area and the adjacent zoning. On the next slide is an aerial image of existing development in the area. The applicant is requesting the above-mentioned specific use permit for a second location of the Amarillo Wesley Community Center. The use is not allowed outright in Residential District 1, but is allowed with a specific use permit as the proposed use shares many characteristics with other institutional uses such as schools, churches, and community centers, which are allowed in the current zoning district. However, the specific use permit process is required to review and ensure standards that minimize impacts to surrounding development are considered and implemented. As part of the application, the applicant was required to submit a site plan with specific development standards for the city to review. All departments approved of the proposed site plan shown today. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the site, but will be conducting an interior remodel of the building. Some of the core development standards which are listed on the site plan include the following. A six-foot-tall wood screening fence along the south property line is to be constructed by the applicant to screen the property from homes to the south. Uses are restricted to those allowed in Residential District 1 and allowed by the site plan. Any other uses would require a change in zoning to be considered. Sign standards shall comply with the city sign ordinance for Residential District 1, and in addition, no portable signs, signs of flashing, rotating, or pulsating lights will be allowed. Days and hours of operation will be from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Friday. Per the applicant, the only activity that will be occurring after 9:00 p.m. will be childcare for evening shift workers. Please note that this is a slight departure from what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, which was 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. This was requested after the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by the applicant in order to ensure adequate childcare is provided for evening shift workers. In addition, in addition, the applicant was also required to submit an appraisal prepared by a licensed real estate appraiser to address any potential impacts to neighboring property. The appraisal stated that there would be no anticipated negative impacts to surrounding property if the use was allowed. Notices were sent in accordance with state law to all property owners within 200 feet regarding the request. Three comments in support of the request and one expressing no opinion on the request have been received at this time. Considering the similarities to other land uses, which do conform to the future land use and character map and the neighborhood unit concept of development, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a 5 to 0 vote. I will take any questions that you have on this item.
Questions, Council? Okay, no questions then. Brady, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing on Item 4E. Anyone willing to, or wanting to speak for, on, or against this item may have three minutes at the podium to do so. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this item? Teresa, you want to? If you don't mind starting with your name, please, thank you.
Teresa Kennedy.
Sorry.
I think it's important to support our truly amazing Amarillo Community Center, Amarillo Wesley Community Center. You know, it's 70 years old this year, and so, as we look at historical sites, the Wesley Center is one of them. But it's also the heart of El Barrio to me, because it has allowed so many families to be able to come in and be supported for many, many years. And this daycare, I love the fact that we're talking about evening and late night for those people who do shift work, who need a place where their kids to go. So, as you're considering this and deciding on this today about going forward, just think about how many parents are needing that evening daycare, that are needing support, that our senior citizens can be supported as well with that. And Wesley has an amazing staff. They have a great place in El Barrio, and we just want to be able to expand that and be able to go to the south, really kind of southeast, southwest side of town, to be able to say, here are some more services families that are living in that neighborhood in the South Lawn area and beyond that. So, thank you for considering this change in the zoning and being able to just truly support our families. Thanks.
Yes, Edie, come on to the podium, please, ma'am.
Edie G. Tomaso, and I'm going to speak as a person who has worked with Wesley Community Center when I worked with early childhood intervention. I can tell you, they have a very high-quality staff, a high-quality program, one that I would recommend to anybody, and the fact that they're taking on evening daycare is something that is very needed in this community. I'm not going to go into what I think about the other one, but I would highly recommend that you pass this and approve it, because I know that it's really needed, and I know from working with them as a professional that I'm very impressed with them.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak about this item? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing on Item 4E and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance rezoning of a 2.912 acre portion of Lot 9, Block 109, South Lawn Edition, Unit Number 36, in Section 184, Block 2, A, B, and M Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from Residential District 1 with specific use permit 198 for an institution of religious, charitable, or philanthropic nature. And this is in the vicinity of Darrell Avenue and Austin Street.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Council Member Sauer to approve the item on 4E. Any discussion or further questions about the motion?
You know what, I just want to say that I'm really happy that Wesley Community Center is doing this and expanding. I think it just kind of gives a picture of who Amarillo actually is, and they figure out how to step into an area that definitely has need, and they know how to make it flow within, and this needs to happen. I mean, South Lawn needs this help, and these families obviously need this opportunity to be able to have these services available. And I just love the way our nonprofits step up and do these kind of things consistently over and over and over again. And that word philanthropic, it just kind of, I think, all the things that have been occurring today, it just runs through who we are as a city. And so, I just want to say to Wesley Community Center, thank you guys for stepping in and doing this and making this available to those families over in South Lawn. I think it's a very important thing that you guys are doing, so thank you.
Yeah, well said.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to Item 3F is consideration of a purchase of real estate located at Northeastern Street and Loop 335. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we jump to that item, I want to just go back to D and E and close the loop on some of the comments I made there. I made light a little bit on Brady's first presentation to council. It is a big deal whenever a staff member is making presentations to council. I guarantee you that Brady made preparation for a million questions that y'all didn't ask. So, it is a, it is a big deal. So, you did great, Brady. Really appreciate what you're doing here, and I didn't, I did not want you to think I was making light of that. There is a, there's a trial that all staff members go through when they make a presentation to council. Andrew's been there, Emily's been there, every staff member in here has been there. So, I just want you to know how much I respect what you did and how, the preparation that you made for the questions that you didn't get asked. And I look forward to what you've got going on, Andrew, in the planning department, because this was a great presentation, and I know you're doing a great job. Thank you, Brady. We've got Kevin Carter to make the presentation on this land acquisition. We could have done this before we did the AEDC, the AQHA, and it would have allowed Kevin to leave. We didn't do it, so Kevin, bring it on.
Yeah, Brady, and you're lucky. I did not get that special little speech after I did my first presentation. I'm still nervous every time I get up here.
And we will have questions for you.
Absolutely, absolutely. This item is to discuss and consider purchase of real estate located in, at Northeastern Street and Loop 335. I believe we have maybe a map. You didn't get it, Johnny? Okay.
There's a map on the dais.
Yes, we have one.
Yes, okay, all right. Yeah, I apologize for not confirming. See, I've already messed up. This item would authorize AEDC to execute a contract and all necessary documents for the purchase of approximately 171 acres of land located at Northeastern and Loop 335. That purchase price is for $855,000 plus closing cost and related expenses. That's about $5,000 per acre. That land is located just inside, just inside the loop, so on the south side of the north loop. This item would be contingent upon the appraisal coming back. The appraiser is a little behind, and so, obviously, there's a lot of real estate transactions happening in town, and so, our appraiser is a little late with the report, but this would be contingent upon that appraisal coming back and showing that the land is worth $5,000 an acre, because we certainly don't want to buy anything that's not at the appraised value or less.
Any reason to expect it wouldn't, Kevin?
No, ma'am.
I mean, you guys have done some research on this ahead of time, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is a third-party appraiser, I mean, that...
Yes, and we rotate how that appraisal process works.
Give us an explanation, exactly.
Is we use about three or four different appraisers. That way, we're not using the same appraiser every time, and that way, we get some, some different opinions in those, that appraisal process. And so, we don't use just one firm on that appraisal process.
Good, thank you.
Kevin, anything on that piece of property that would be an obstruction for building structures, or is there any easements, anything running through there that...
There's not. There's a little bit of a natural drainage in there, so probably only about 85% to 90% of that land is usable, but the other 10% is going to solve the drainage with that item. And so, that's a great question. And so, but other than that, it's a fairly flat piece of land. We feel with it being on Loop 335, it would be really good for distribution, logistics type of, you know, projects.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Kevin. We have a motion with regard to Item 3F.
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the purchase of approximately 171 acres of land located at Northeastern Street and Loop 335 in the amount of $855,000 plus closing cost and related expenses.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Council Member Smith. Any discussion or questions about the motion? Oh, okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your work, Kevin Carter. You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks.
Michael, Doug, Paul, yeah, very proud of you guys. Thank you for your work.
Call Brady and ask him how to do this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to. Thank you, Council Member Smith.
Yeah, he can help you out. He can give you some pointers.
Yeah, you always got to look for that funny remark from the left-hand side of the table. Okay, Item 3H, Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We have Andrew Freeman present the item. This is a TechDOT grant application. It is tied to one of the project priorities, or one of the priorities from the Barrio Neighborhood Plan. So, this will leverage funds that we have to get a whole bunch of funds that TechDOT would offer for a project like this. So, Andrew, take it away.
Yes, sir. Rest assured, I have a map in my presentation. So, yes, this is a TechDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant. Council has seen these before in other projects like the Buchanan Streetscape Project. This has been a high-priority project that Emily's coordinated with the Barrio Neighborhood Plan Committee on to submit this grant application. It is to increase pedestrian safety and encourage economic development and reinvestment in the Barrio. It'd include widening sidewalks, installing pedestrian ADA amenities, and enhancing transit... installing pedestrian ADA amenities, and enhancing transit stops along the north and south side of Southeast Tenth, basically covering a six-block area. Here's an aerial photo of the blocks that would be considered as part of this grant. This is something that's been worked on previously, even before the grant application process opened up. So they've been working on design and preliminary costs. And really, this is just a good opportunity to try and get some funds to go toward this project. Here are a few renderings that were created to show what the designs might look like. Part of this has been helping contribute to their fundraising campaign. Because it is a large multimillion-dollar project, it wouldn't all be covered by bond dollars or the TechDOT grant. So they are continuing to fundraise on a regular basis. As far as the total project cost, it's estimated at 3.1 million. That includes alleys and a private plaza as part of the overall project. The project is eligible for approximately 1.6 million through the TechDOT Grant Project process. The average program is awarded 1.395 million. It does require a 20% local match, which is proposed to be met with the 2016 bond allocation to the Barrio Neighborhood. And also, we have gone through the first phase of this application process. This is the second, second phase and does require this resolution of support from City Council as, as the sponsor for the project. And then, once it goes through that process, we are hoping to find out that we are awarded the grant in October. And again, the 20% match would come from the Proposition 1 bonds. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Andrew, do we have any visibility on a federal infrastructure package and whether or not a sidewalk project like this would be covered by that?
I don't believe we know at this time. I know they're still debating at the federal level how much might go toward that program, but this would be something I think we'd want to submit for in the future because they do typically cover infrastructure like sidewalks and roads. So just don't know how competitive we'd be just based on what the final rules look like.
I just, Mr. City Manager, I would like for us to for sure put a pin in that and have somebody watching that federal legislative process to see if that, if that package, if that bill comes through on infrastructure. I think there are some places in the city where we need some sidewalk infrastructure in the Barrio and North Heights. And I would be very interested in seeing the city pursue federal dollars to accomplish those projects, this one included. I mean, so yes, we might get this grant, but if something were to break before Congress breaks for their summer break in August on that federal infrastructure package, I want us to be watching and ready.
We will, we will have, based on what comes out of the federal infrastructure package and based upon your input previously, this is something the mayor's been on for, for some time, ever since it came out, we'll make sure that we have projects in the can that have to do with transportation. Specifically, we'll make sure that we have very clear understanding of the costs and specific projects that we could do that will almost be in-the-can projects on sidewalks with regard to sidewalks, not just in the Barrio, but specifically in the Barrio, also in all of our other neighborhood plan project areas, and then also citywide. So we'll have all of that ready to go based on what the requirements and criteria are for federal funding guidelines. We'll make sure that we have a package ready to put forward on sidewalks and on other transportation projects.
Okay, I really appreciate you guys doing that work. I know it's, it's a lot. But if that were to come and those dollars were to be available, I think we should be first in line to snatch them up. Okay, anything else?
Well, I'm going to talk again.
Okay. Pull your microphone a little closer because now that, now we're off of Zoom and back to our 1985 microphones, somebody's going to text me and say, I couldn't hear what y'all are saying when I was watching at home.
A certain person hadn't already texted me. So, because I've got a couple that text me now and then and say, get closer to the microphone.
We can't hear you, yeah.
Here's one thing that I'd want to say out of this. Probably the neighborhood projects has been probably one of the highlights of my past four years. And part of the reason behind that is the very fact of, I don't even know if this would be occurring if it wasn't for the Barrios Neighborhood Planning Group Committee were not in effect. And it's the amazing thing about this that I never would have realized would happen would be whenever we give an opportunity to a particular neighborhood to make their neighborhood better and make it, and let them highlight the best parts of their neighborhood. It's happened time after time after time. And, and I can see this is, I mean, you know, obviously, 10th Street is, 10th Avenue is one of the big thoroughfares through the Barrio. And whenever we do something like this, and you guys have worked very hard at getting this done, just to get it to this point, and then you get to see the renderings of what it does, you guys are literally helping transform a portion of Amarillo. And it's, and I would say you're transforming your neighborhood, but what I need for you to understand is on top of that, you're not just transforming your neighborhood, you're actually helping transform the entire city of Amarillo. And I think these things are very, very important. The whole thing like also painting the water tower and doing the Route 66, you guys painting the bridge, I mean, and the gateway entrance, the things that are beginning to happen and the way that people are beginning to take, take involvement in our own city and help our city look better. It's just a really, really, really great opportunity. And I just say kudos to you guys. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I think you should keep up the work.
Agreed. Anybody else? Okay. Do we have a motion with regard to this item then? Thank you, Andrew.
Yes, we do, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution for the Barrio Neighborhood. This is Southeast, Southeast 10th Avenue Streetscape, application to the Texas Department of Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Grant. And this is going to be in the amount of 3.1 million dollars with a 20% match, which is between 330,000 to 400,000 dollars, which would come from the Prop 1 bond allocations.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this item. Any further discussion or questions from the council about the motion? I will just say, I have watched these two particular public servants spend hours and hours and hours on the small things and the big things. Some of those are thankless jobs, and some of them are more front-facing, pats-on-the-back-type jobs, but you guys have shown up to do it all. And you, here, as two of you representing an entire committee of workers who are having the impact that Councilmember Sauer mentioned, so I just want to officially pat you on the back and thank you for the work that you're doing for the city. Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a five-oh vote. And y'all get an award for lasting to the, almost to the end of the meeting. You were here for the beginning and all the middle, and here we go to the end. Okay, item 3I is a resolution approving a settlement agreement between the cities of Amarillo, Lubbock, Dalhart, and Channing with regard to Atmos Energy. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, I'm going to make a little deviation from what the agenda says as far as who's presenting. I'm going to throw it to Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs, who's been working with me, and City Attorney Brian McWilliams throughout the process with Atmos. We have Philip Littlejohn and Michael Gonzalez with Atmos here, who can back up Laura and provide any additional information that council might need. But Laura, go ahead and take it away.
All right. So I just want to give a quick summary of kind of the timeline of events and then some of the high points of the settlement agreement. So on September 30th, Atmos Energy filed a statement of intent to increase rates within the incorporated areas of Amarillo, Lubbock, Dalhart, and Channing. They also sought to increase approximately 8.3 million in revenue, and that equates to an increase in annual revenue of about 7.7%, including the cost of gas, and approximately 10.8% excluding the cost of gas. And they proposed this to go into effect November 4th, 2020. So back in 2012 was the last time that Atmos had filed a rate case, and since then has sought annual increases in their rates pursuant to the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, also known as GRIP. However, they've filed the maximum number of GRIPs that they can, and so they now had to go ahead and file a rate case. So the prior city action that's been taken is, so the city adopted a resolution suspending Atmos' proposed effective date on the rate increase from the November 4th, 2020 date to February 2nd, 2021. Since then, Atmos has agreed to further extend that deadline to June 1st, 2021, and that is why we're here today. Through the city's prior resolution, it also required Atmos to reimburse the city for its reasonable expenses incurred in assessing the merits of Atmos' rate increase request. So at this point, we now have a settlement that is agreement that's in place between the cities and Atmos. And the key terms to the settlement agreement that this resolution would approve is the rate increase is about a $4.55 million increase to revenue, which is about 55% of what they had originally requested at the 8.3 million. And that was through negotiations. The new rates will go into effect on June 1st. It also recognizes in the rates the decrease of the federal corporate income tax structure from the 35% to the 21% pursuant to the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. We're also, the settlement also looks at a reduction in the customer charge for all rate classes, including a reduction from $27.67 to $15 for residential rate class, and from $200.59 to $50 for the public authority rate class. And then there's also other categories there. But to note, the customer charges saw a decrease, and the consumption charge is where the increase is at. And then, the reimbursement of the city's rate case expenses would be in the amount of $115,950. And as mentioned, we do have Philip Littlejohn and Michael Gonzalez with Atmos Energy, if anyone would like more specifics on, related to Atmos' standpoint on this. We also have another item that we're going to be bringing forward to council at the next council meeting on June 8th. This is a rate case that actually translates into an increase. The next item will actually be a decrease to the rates, and it's also related to the tax cuts that we have seen, the federal income tax cuts. And we'll have more information for that on June 8th, but wanted to make sure council knew. There's two items coming forward today's and the one on June 8th. This one is an increase, the next one's a decrease. So there's kind of a net effect there that we'll be going in greater detail over with council on June 8th. So are there questions I can answer or Brian could answer, or if you would like someone from Atmos to answer any questions?
Someone will ask us, so I just want to clarify, this has nothing to do with the Great Freeze. So can we just say that right up front? I'm just going to, gentlemen, thank you for being at the meeting, but maybe Philip or some, or Michael, either one of you, just comment on that, you know, the impetus of this, the why behind this rate increase and how it is not related at all to the Great Freeze.
Yeah, so this rate increase represents a filing that we had to statutorily make by December of 2020. So we made it on September 30th, that filing. That filing, obviously, was September 30th, so any of the extraordinary gas costs related to Winter Storm Uri is not included within this filing. This filing is based on base rates opposed to gas cost rates associated with the winter storm.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. Just try to get in front of that one. Anybody else? These are highly complicated, highly regulated processes, and there's a lot to it. So we appreciate that you guys would come and be available to answer questions.
Yeah, and I appreciate the partnership with Jared and his team working through over the last couple of months with this. And as Laura mentioned, we did decide to move the implementation date from April to June 1st, and again, work with Jared's team. So really appreciate the partnership with the city.
Good. Okay, thank you, guys. Counsel, do we have a motion then with regard to item 3I?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution approving the settlement agreement between the cities of Amarillo, Lubbock, Dalhart, and Channing, which is the cities or ALDC and Atmos Energy Corporation, and that's Atmos or the company regarding Atmos' Energies application and request to increase rates filed with the city on September 30th, 2020, to be effective June 1st, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved by Count, Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3I. Any questions or discussions about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five-oh vote. Thank you, guys, for being here today. And the last item on our non-consent agenda is item 3J, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance of Amarillo Potter Events Venue District Special Tax and Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds. And, Mr. City Manager, I assume Laura is doing our presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Her stepping up to the podium, you're right, was a, was a big tip-off there. This is an item that's going to save us quite a bit of money over the life of this refunding. So Laura, walk us through it.
Absolutely. So I'm going to introduce Stephen Adams. I think most of you have met him. He's with Specialized Public Finance. They are our financial advisors for the city and also for the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District. We also have Terry Wright, who is the president of the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District. He's back here as well and has been a trooper waiting for the last agenda item as well. So yes, we have a great savings that we're going to go over today, and this is the last action that we need to finalize the issuance of these refunding bonds. So I will hand it over to Stephen, and we have a presentation to go through.
Thank you, Laura, Mayor, members of the council. As we pull this up, let me just kind of remind everybody that the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District was established many years ago. The statute started allowing these events venue districts primarily to build large football and basketball arenas. But Amarillo, the city of Amarillo and Potter County jointly took advantage of this. This district can levy a 2% car rental tax and, I mean, hotel occupancy tax and a 7% car rental tax for the purpose of, in this case, the arena at Tri-State Fair and part of the Civic Center. And those projects and these taxes were voted on at that time. So the, the item we're doing today is simply refunding some bonds for savings, as well as extending the debt to November of 2051, because as long as bonds are outstanding, those two revenue sources are in place. The bonds have a 10-year call. If the city council ever wanted to pay off all the bonds, it could, it could do that, and that would eliminate those two revenue sources for the city. So the refunding that we did, we did get these bonds rated AA+ by Standard &amp; Poor's. I know it's late, but I want to talk about that for a minute because we started this last year during the pandemic. And at that time, as you know, Standard &amp; Poor's put all the ratings of almost everybody, including all the city's bonds, on negative credit watch. We obviously couldn't sell hotel occupancy tax, car rental tax-supported bonds during the pandemic. So we waited, and the city's revenues have turned around. In the process of rating this, they went back, Standard &amp; Poor's did, looked at the GO rating, the hotel occupancy tax bonds, the ones that paid for the baseball stadium, as well as these bonds and their ratings. And they affirmed the city's AAA bond rating and took it off negative outlook, which is one of the first cities they've done that. Now, we, Jared and his staff and a lot of people put a lot of effort into explaining why that should happen. They also affirmed the rating of A+ of the hotel occupancy tax bonds and took those bonds off negative credi watch, credit watch. They affirmed the AA+ venue district bonds, which as far as I know are the highest rated of any of these in the state, and they took these off negative credit watch. So all of that was really good and very helpful. The bonds that were refunded were sold in 2009. It had an interest rate of 4.02%. These bonds that we sold have a true interest cost of 1.32%. So that interest rate difference allowed us to have a present value savings of $356,000, which is 8%, 8.6% of the debt that we owed on the 2009 bonds. So we saved 8.6% of what we owed. So we saved 8.6% of what we owed. The bonds do have an optional redemption of November 15th, 2028, when the city or the venue district could, at its option, pay all these bonds off. And we are set to close on June 15th. The next slide is the savings. As you can see on the long column on the right, the venue district will save about $80,000 a year between the years 22 and 28, I mean, 29, but then it's extending the debt out to 2052 with, in very small increments. And again, it's doing that to keep the venue district in place. Even with that, we're saving $316,000 in total debt service and 356 in present value debt service, so a lot of savings. The next page is the principal and interest on the bonds that were sold by the venue district. And then, and you can see they go out to 2052. And you can see the coupon rates are obviously higher than 1.32%. And I'll explain that on the next page, but what happens is, the buyers of the bonds want to pay a premium and get a higher coupon rate so they can get more tax-exempt interest. And in doing that, if you look at the next page, on the sources and uses, we sold $3,945,000 in bonds, and the underwriters, the purchasers through the underwriters paid the venue district an extra $268,789 so they could get those higher coupon rates. So we actually sold fewer bonds but received that premium. And we also paid all the cost of issuance and the underwriters, all those numbers are included in all these savings. The last page is kind of where the interest rates have been over the last 10 years and how we're able to save these, so much money on these bonds. So, you know, it's a good time to be a seller of bonds right now. And the, the action that you're taking is actually ratifying, it's doing two things. One, it's ratifying what the venue district did, which was required by statute, because you created them and you appoint part of their board along with the county. And they, they did this yesterday at the county commissioners' court meeting. And in your case, there was also a lease that the city has entered into, and you're extending it for the life of these bonds, because the reason we get that AA+ rating is because of that lease, although it's subject to appropriation, there is a lease with the city that backstops these bonds. And Mayor, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And as Laura mentioned, Terry is here as well, if you would like any comments from him.
Counsel questions for Steven? Well, first of all, I'll say, Terry, thank you for your service. Steven, don't leave, I do have a question for you. If you put a banker in charge for your committee, they're gonna bring you savings. So just note to the council for who to appoint to what position, but good job, Terry, and we really appreciate the committee's work and everything they're doing to, to serve the city. Steven, I'm just curious, because we have some decisions, I think, in front of us. This won't be the last time that you hear this question, I don't think, but talk to us about interest rates and what you see them doing from your, from your chair, from your perspective. Obviously, I'm, we're all looking at the trend that you've put up in front of us. How long is it gonna hold down there? If we want to do some big projects and lock in some, I mean, historically amazing interest rates, how long do we have to do that?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. We hear about inflation, and we see it, and we're told by the Federal Reserve Board that it's transitory. Inflation is the one thing that will drive long-term bond yields up. However, the tax-exempt bonds have been coming down, because I think people are anticipating an increase in the tax rate, which makes them more advantageous. We're selling bonds this week for other entities, and we're selling them at rates that we really haven't seen. Maybe we saw them maybe a month ago, a little lower, but you've got to go back to the 60s to see the rates that tax-exempt bonds are selling at right now. I don't know how long it'll hold. I would suspect the Federal Reserve Board seems to think they want to keep rates down for a couple of years, if they can control it. I think they will. I think for sure you have a few months. I don't know how far out before, and if there is inflation, that will drive rates up.
What they can't control.
What they can't control.
I've said over and over again, Amarillo is always the prettiest girl at the sale, at this dance, right? I mean, given our bond rating, given our
Yes.
historical performance, giving how solid we are financially, both from a policy and a performance point of view. Having participated in some of those bond rating calls over the last year, it was scary times to do a call this time last year and not know what was coming. So very glad to be where we are now versus where we were last year, and that is excellent news that they have removed that negative rating. They never did downgrade us, which was great, and we always fared well in comparison to other cities. But I think that's one of the things that I take away from serving on council, is just having a deeper understanding of how well the city performs in achieving this bond rating and in maintaining it, and, and how we put it to work. I mean, we actually had a project last year where we, I can't remember if we approved it in 19, we got a 0% interest rate.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and it's because we're getting to stand on the shoulders of years and years and years of sound financial policy and management in the city. So Steven, your team has been a part of that for, I don't, how many years have you done work for the city?
Before you moved.
Oh, clearly before you and I, but
25?
Yeah, I mean, a lot, you, you and Dean Frigo, and
Right.
then Michelle, you know, you're outlasting numerous people on their tenures here at the city, so.
But not Laura.
But not Laura.
She came after me.
Okay, well, I wanted to pick your brain on that, and like I said, it won't be the last time that we ask. If we had a crystal ball, we would know exactly when to pull the trigger on things to maximize the benefit, but you're the next best thing we have to
Yeah, and I think the other thing, and I don't know how to predict this either, but the underlying commodities of the items that people use to build these projects has, have been going all over the place, and I know you've talked about it in some earlier items, but, you know, hopefully that will come down some, maybe, is, but that's been a real problem for a lot of our clients. They just, the, the cost has just gone up for anything that anybody's trying to build right now.
Yeah, and I think you just, I mean, you look at all of that picture as a whole, you'll be able to look backwards and go, "Oh, it would have been better to wait three months," or, but then again, we don't know what interest rates are gonna do, and, so when you find that crystal ball,
Yeah.
bring it to the next meeting, okay?
I will, I promise.
Anybody else have questions for Steven? All right, thank you very much. We do need a motion on item 3J, counsel.
Okay, Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District Special Tax and Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds, New Series 2021, and authorizing the Second Amendment to the amended and restated lease between the city of Amarillo, excuse me, between the city and the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3J. Any questions or discussion about that motion?
And I just wanted to ask a question really quick. So the, the savings that we are getting, it, it reflects the present value debt service, which was 356,787?
Yes, that's the present value of the savings of all the different savings and then higher costs going out for 52 years. I mean, through 2052 fiscal year. That's correct.
All right, thank you. 20, 2052, right?
Okay. We have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item 3J passes with the five-o vote. And we have reached the end of our non-executive session agenda. I thank all of you for staying to the, to the end. At this time, I'll ask the city attorney to read our dismissal language.
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session of the Amarillo City Council was announced on May 25th, 2021 at 4:54 PM under the following authorities, Section 551.071, assault with an attorney on a matter in which an attorney's duty to the governmental body, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, conflicts with this chapter. Section 551.072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, sell, value real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned to executive session.